When I went to the Miller's Hall Library and started reading through The Crisis, the NAACP magazine, I stumbled on a story. And it was the story of Coatesville, Pennsylvania, and the lynching of Zakaria Walker.
This was a man who was in change, who was dead. And who knows if they even had him on painkillers in those days? Who knows? Hopefully, they did, I thought, so he wouldn't feel what was going on when it happened. You know, I don't know, but just that part of it, of the poor man just came out of surgery, and he's yanked out of his hospital bed. You got minimum, the low estimate was fifteen hundred people. The high estimate was five thousand people that were here. So even if you take, go with the low estimate the whole way through the scenario, it's very frightful to think not one person stood up.
A howling mob of the best citizens in the foremost state of the Union has vindicated the self-evident superiority of the white race. Ah, the splendor of that Sunday night dance. The flames beat and curled against the moonlit sky. The church bells chimed. The scorched and crooked thing self-wounded and changes cot, clawed to the edge of the ash with a stifled groan. But the brave and sturdy farmers picked him back with the bloody pitchforks until the deed was done. Let the eagle scream.
People could hear him screaming from a mile away. And if you think about it, there are a lot of people here that weren't, you know, that were just staying in their houses, just not going out there. You know, there's a Quaker meeting house up the road. What were they all doing? There's churches around here. It's just really very sad. I mean, I can't imagine having to suffer through that, that poor man.
Gus T. Renegade in for another broadcast, hopefully to share constructive information on the system of white supremacy today's day, Thursday, March seventeen, two thousand twenty-two, so I have been told. This is our book club, ten years that we have had a book club. Brand new book, we finished The Man in the High Castle last week, Philip K. Dick fiction, back to nonfiction, what we would normally be doing on the book club. And now everybody is off the hook. You don't have to deal with old grumpy Gus T., disgruntled, because everybody picked a book and then did not participate. Gus T. picked the book that we are about to start. And all of the details on this one, I originally picked Marian Collins', The Palm Beach Murder. And I didn't just pick it, I had the description posted and everything. People had already, oh, I'm interested, I want to do this. I was so excited, and it still am, to read this book. It is about the murder of Lita McClinton, black female, beautiful black female. She grew up in Atlanta. I lived in Atlanta and didn't know anything about this case. I saw it on Unsolved Mysteries, even though this case has been on America's Most Wanted. And in fact, they just had a very recent, I don't know, report, one of those like true crime hour-long segments that they just did on the death, murder of Lita McClinton. I was super excited to do that book, right? Started today. Then we had suspected race soldier Dr. J. Russell Hawkins as a guest on the program this past Tuesday to talk about his book, The Bible Told Them So. And Strom Thurmond is a key figure of that book. He's mentioned over and over and over and over, all the way throughout, and repeatedly with racists writing, the former South Carolina senator, "We gotta do something about the niggas. I can't send my white girl to school in the morning and have some nigger bus driver raping her, and these little raping black boys in school raping our daughters, and oh my gosh, what are we gonna do? Strom Thurmond, you gotta save us." So the whole book is filled with that type of content over and over and over again with zero mention of, oh, by the way, racist senator, former governor Strom Thurmond was raping a fifteen-year-old black female who worked at his residence and got her pregnant. To totally omit that information is an extraordinary act of white supremacy racism, in my view. Dr. Russell said that he was aware that Strom Thurmond was having sex with Essie Mae Washington Williams, but he, or excuse me, with Carrie Butler, but he did not know that she was only fifteen at the time. He could have been practicing racism and lying about that portion of it, but at minimum, he should have known. And even still, even if Carrie Butler had been fifty-five and Strom Thurmond had been twenty-five at the time, that is still a massive act of white supremacy racism to omit that. All of the same offenses would apply. It's lying, the hypocrisy, and to be saying that racists like old Strom Thurmond are concerned about separation and mongrelization of the races while you're raping a black female, even if she was fifty-five years old? No, that should have been included. And like I said, I suspect that you're lying, that you did know all of this information, and you're behaving just like all of the other white people who protect child raping racists like Thomas Jefferson, like Woody Allen, like Strom Thurmond, long list, Mary Kayla Turner, we want to make sure we get some white women in there too, but it's lots of these folks. So instead of reading Marian Collins', The Palm Beach Murders, we are going to read Essie Mae Washington Williams', Dear Senator. One, this puts us back in for memoirs slash autobiographies, like, oof, we have read a grip of them. I would have, at no point in my life, thought that I would be a fan of not just nonfiction, but biographies, like, wow. But that is our record here at the book club. Also, I was explaining the way that I pick books generally. I normally don't wait until the last minute, like the day of or twenty-four hours beforehand to decide what book we're gonna read, but I do try to pay attention to things that are happening, news events that are happening, things that we've been talking about on the program, what's important to what's happening right now. I try to pay attention to all of those things. And wow, with this book, it's not just that, you know, yes, we just talked with Professor Hawkins a couple of days ago, and he omitted really pertinent information about Strom Thurmond in that text and him sexually searing this fifteen-year-old black child. That's a really important reason, but just within the first two chapters of this text, Essie Mae Wash- Essie Mae Williams-Washington talks about the delectable Negro. You already got an idea why if you heard that intro, the lynching of Zakaria Walker. She talks about hush puppies, anybody who was with us neutralizing workplace racism not too long ago, how in the world hush puppies pops up on the cows in the last thirty days and then pops up again in this book. She talks about raping black males, of course, everybody's gotta talk about raping black males, Adolf Hitler and World War II. It's almost like this book is picking up where we just left off at with World War II, back in the real world with The Man and The Woman. So lots of reasons, when I see things like that, you should be able to hear it within the first two chapters, just as we get started, then I tend to think, oh yeah, that was a good pick, this is what we're supposed to be reading. In fact, when I saw that about hush puppies and then she goes into World War II, I was thinking, oof, those might be some little signposts from the Creator. Yes, this was the book that we were supposed to read. I won't say a whole lot about Zakaria Walker, because you will hear the significance and why I started with that audio. I was going to play some of the audio of us talking about Strom Thurmond's raping conduct and Professor Hawkins' lame justification for why he didn't include that material, but when I read the section about the murder and torture of Zakaria Walker, wow. Not a whole lot else to say. I'm super excited, ready to get rolling. Hopefully, folks will learn, take good notes, and we will chat it up once we finish with the first portion of the audio. If nothing else, this is a lot of folks, one of their favorite areas of activity, Area Eight, sex, along with politics and South Carolina history, a lot of other subject matter, hush puppies. We will get started. Context of White Supremacy. I felt so guilty that I hadn't read this book before. Compensating, take care of that now. This is the late Essie Mae Washington Williams', Dear Senator. Context of White Supremacy, Audio Segment One. Dear Senator, A Memoir by the Daughter of Strom Thurmond. Written by Essie Mae Washington Williams and William Stadium. Dedication. Dedicated to my children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. My legacy to you is the discovery of your lineage. Continue the journey of life, love, and family. Endure the hardships and embrace the future. Judge not the ethnicity of the person, but scrutinize the character. I love each of you. God bless all of you. In loving memory of my mother, Carrie Butler Clark; my father, James Strom Thurmond; my aunt, Mary Washington Bowman; my uncle, John Henry Washington; my brother, Willie James Clark; and my cousin, Calvin Franklin Burton. Chapter One, Summer of Thirty-Eight. I always thought I had a fairly normal childhood until I found out my parents weren't who I thought they were. I grew up in Coatesville, Pennsylvania, a small town in the hills along the Brandywine River on the threshold of the rich farmland of the Amish country. We were only forty miles from Philadelphia, and the main line of the Pennsylvania Railroad ran through our town. And yet, Philadelphia might as well have been the moon. That was the big city. Coatesville was nowhere, but for a little girl, it was everywhere. It was all I had and all I knew. Coatesville was what was considered a one-horse town, but that horse was a very powerful steed called steel. The Lucans Steel Company dominated everything about our town. Its dozens of soaring smokestacks dominated the skyline. They were our own skyscrapers. Even the smoke belching from those enormous stacks was a point of pride, not pollution. That pungent, thick, black soot meant the mills were working full blast, that the little town was booming. It was the smell of money. Like most men in Coatesville, my father, John Henry Washington, worked for the steel mills. Bethlehem Steel and Worth Brothers Steel had huge plants in Coatesville, but the colossus was Lucans Steel. Like an industrial octopus, Lucans had devoured its rivals and made them its own. The matriarch of the business was a legendary local character named Rebecca Lucans, known as the Woman of Steel. She was an independent woman, far ahead of her time, a Pennsylvania version of a steel magnolia. Rebecca was the driving force behind the expansion of her family's Brandywine Ironworks into an international powerhouse. She was one of the first women in America to run a major company, and her daughter married a man named Houston. When I was growing up, the Houston's were Coatesville's first family. They lived in a grand manor house called Terracina and were to Coatesville what the Kennedys or the Rockefellers are to America. Despite the small size of the town, fifteen thousand people, I never met a Houston, and by the same token, I never aspired to become a woman of steel. American women today have those sort of huge have-it-all ambitions, but growing up black during the Great Depression, I was perfectly happy to dream about becoming a nurse. That was a pretty big deal at the time, and I was more ambitious than most. My mother, or at least the woman who I thought was my mother, kept house while Daddy worked on the assembly line. Mother had worked as a picker in the cotton fields of South Carolina and said that was enough hard labor for two lifetimes. I had a half-brother, Calvin Burton, who was my mother's son by a previous relationship, which I later learned was not an actual marriage. Calvin was seven years older than I, and by the time I was thirteen in nineteen thirty-eight, he had left home to live in New York City. I had fantasies of following him there to become a nurse in a big-city hospital, but these were only fantasies. At thirteen, I still hadn't gotten to Philadelphia. We lived in a small, two-story, three-bedroom rowhouse in a neighborhood called The Spruces, named after the tree, which was populated by other black steelworkers. Most of them, like my family, hailed from the South. I had my own room, which seemed like a castle to me. The house was heated with coal stoves, and there was no running water or any bathrooms. We had to use an outhouse in the back and take tub baths in the bedroom using water we'd carry from an outside pump. It sounds primitive, but it seemed normal then, although the winters were awfully cold and the day of the week the big sanitation trucks would come to clean the outhouses was the smelliest day you could imagine. We'd all try to stay away from home on that day. I remember visiting the home of a white girlfriend. The house wasn't any nicer than ours, but it did have an indoor toilet. It seemed like the ultimate in high technology at the time. I'll never forget the wonderful dinners we'd have: fried chicken, biscuits, lots of fresh vegetables, and the sweetest pies made with local peaches, strawberries, apples, and plums. Every night was like Thanksgiving. My mother, who was tall and slim and a great cook, always wore a kerchief around her head. That seemed old-fashioned at the time, as did her habit of chewing tobacco and expelling it into a spittoon. I gathered that it was an old Southern custom she'd brought with her. I didn't question her about it. In fact, I didn't tend to question things at all. My parents were of the "children should be seen and not heard" school. As a little girl, I started out quite chatty, but one day, my mother warned me, "That mouth of yours can get you into trouble," after which I learned to keep it shut. We never talked much at those fine dinners, partly because we were all listening to the radio all through the meal. That was our ear to the world. Despite all the bad news that seemed to be coming through the airwaves, the seemingly endless Depression, the rise of the Nazis in Europe, disasters like the Hindenburg airship explosion, the feeling around the table was very positive. My father, a handsome man who always came to the table after a hard, dusty day at the mills, immaculate and smelling deliciously of soap and cologne, always said a blessing of thanks for the food, for his job, for his wonderful family, and for funny or odd things like Shirley Temple, or Charlie Chan, or Heinz Ketchup. And then we'd listen to comedy shows like Edgar Burgen and his puppet Charlie McCarthy, or the big band music of Benny Goodman. There wasn't much need to talk. The radio said it all. And then came nineteen thirty-eight, a big year for me for a lot of reasons. First of all, my parents got divorced. My father, apparently, was not only a hard worker, but also a hard drinker, haunting the many taverns of our town rarely during the week, but frequently on weekends. Steelworking and hard drinking seemed to go hand in hand. Prohibition had ended in a big way, and there was a bar or whiskey house on every corner, many of which seemed to have been frequented by my father. There were no problems at home that I ever noticed, but there must have been plenty. One day, Daddy was gone, and I never saw or spoke to him again. In keeping with my mother's philosophy of the fewer questions, the better, I never asked her about my father's departure, much as I would have loved to do so, nor did she sit me down for a heart-to-heart about why he left. He was gone, and that was that. I missed the confident, comforting masculine presence of my father. He made me feel safe in an increasingly turbulent world. I felt lost without him, but learned to keep that kind of emotion deeply to myself, and eventually, the pain died down. Not too long afterward, my mother remarried. My new stepfather, James Bowman, wasn't as tall or handsome as my real father, John Henry Washington, but he had the virtue, at least in my mother's eyes, of not drinking. He also was a devout churchgoer, which Daddy was not. Because he was one of the rare people in the area who didn't work for Lucans Steel, James Bowman was outside of the hard-drinking, steel-driving culture of Coatesville. He seemed a little dull, but my mother liked that. James Bowman had a job as a cement finisher for a local contractor. He built everything from bridges to houses. I also called him Daddy, although I never really felt that kind of bond. I warmed up to him when he moved us to a new house in the Newlinville area, named after the farmer who sold the land for the subdivision. We had a peach orchard as our back garden, and my stepfather himself installed a bath, toilet, and sink. To me, it was the ultimate in luxury. I felt like a little princess, every bit the equal of the lords of steel in their place at Terracina. I enjoyed watching my stepfather work. I admired his craftsmanship. But he was more a man of deeds than words, and we never spoke very much. I became even more glad for that radio. Nineteen thirty-eight was also a watershed year in that it marked the first time I had to attend a segregated school. Before this, my elementary school was completely integrated. There were thirty students in my grade, half-black and half-white, and we all got along fine. In our early years during the Depression, we all wore the same gray flannel welfare uniform and all ate the same rations of peanut butter and powdered milk. We were all poor, but we were together. Most of the whites were the children of Eastern European immigrants who worked for Lucans: Poles, Czechs, Hungarians, Slavs, all with long "Oski" names that were hard to pronounce. The other half were black kids whose families had moved to Coatesville from all over the South. My folks were from Edgefield, South Carolina, and there were dozens of other Edgefieldians around. I guess when one family found a place of north, they sent for their kin and friends, and a little community was born. My friends were both white and black. In nineteen thirty-eight, however, all the blacks in our county were herded into one huge regional high for just one year of school, while the whites went to several others. I'm still not sure why they split us up. It had something to do with administrative efficiency, cost-saving, whatever. This was the first time my black friends and I had ever been defined by our race. When school started, we found ourselves staring at each other, trying to make sense of it, but none of us said anything about it, even as a joke. Apparently, all of us had been raised in the same school of mouth-shut acceptance of the way things were. I think all of us were glad to be getting an education and an excellent one at that. If anything, the all-black faculty paid more attention to us than the white teachers had. I never had more caring teachers, but there was no sense of black unity, no stirrings of what later became known as Black Power. We were just a bunch of local schoolkids herded into a school where everyone happened to be black. We didn't have time to reflect on the deeper implications. The term was over in a flash, but it did make its mark. When we entered the fully-integrated regional high school, where there were three hundred students to a grade, the lines had been drawn. I only had black friends. There were blacks on the sports teams, but none were allowed to be cheerleaders. The idea of having a white boyfriend or girlfriend would have never occurred to any of us. Although I had been held back in the first grade because of an awful sculpt disease that afflicted all the kids in our neighborhood, I had been making up for lost time ever since. I had been at the head of my class each year in elementary school and would go on to be an honor student in high school. But that one year in junior high branded me, in my own mind, as a second-class citizen. That feeling was reinforced by Coatesville. Although the thousands of blacks who had come up from the South may have seen Coatesville as a kind of promised land, offering good jobs and equality that just didn't exist below the Mason-Dixon line, in Maryland, only twenty miles from us, the reality of Coatesville fell short of these ideals. Steelworker wages were low, and equality was a myth. Blacks could shop at Santee's Drugstore, but we weren't allowed to sit at the soda fountain and have their fabulous-looking ice cream floats and sundaes, nor were we allowed to swim at the public pool. If we- If we wanted to swim, we were told to go jump in a creek, quite literally. The YWCA was likewise off-limits, which didn't seem like a good Christian attitude. There were two movie theaters in town. At the auditorium, we blacks had to sit in the colored balcony, while at the palace, we were sequestered in a cordon of narrow seats in the rear of the theater. I tried not to let it detract me from watching my favorites Fred Astaire, and Ginger Rogers, and Heath Throbbs' Clark Gable, Errol Flynn, and Gary Cooper, but sitting up there in the auditorium made me feel strange about having girlish crushes on these white movie idols. If I couldn't even sit in a normal seat, how could Clark Gable respect me, or, in my dreams, love me? So my girlfriends and I had our own little protest by sneaking down into the white seats. Once the ushers caught us and ordered us back upstairs, I held up the line and demanded our money back. The ushers gave it to us, relieved to see us go. That may have been gutsy for a thirteen-year-old, but that was as radical as I got. For the most part, however, I was happy. I had my family and my friends. I loved school, I had a private bathroom, and I could call my friends on our telephone. We had that radio on, which I could listen to President Roosevelt and all kinds of cereals, and we had a Victrola where I could play, over and over, Ella Fitzgerald's hit, "A Tiscet, A Tasket." I adored that song. I also liked "My Heart Belongs to Daddy," though at the time I had no idea how significant that title would soon become in my life. Outside of the house, aside from going to the movies, I enjoyed hiking in the beautiful woods around Coatesville, picking violets, blackberries, and hickory nuts, and I actually preferred the fresh creeks to any old swimming pool. I even made my own money in the summer, getting up at four AM to pick strawberries. If I filled fifty baskets, I would make a dollar, and that seemed like a fortune to me. I joined the church at age twelve. My stepfather went to the AME Methodist Church every Sunday. Mother, like her first husband, was a member of the Bernarden Baptist Church in the Spruces, but wasn't very religious and liked to sleep late. So I went with my stepfather at first to get out of the house, and later because I loved singing the hymns like "The Old Rugged Cross," "Just a Closer Walk With Thee," and "Amazing Grace." I soon joined the church myself, my mother's Baptist Church, to try to get her to attend more often. My mother, who didn't take churchgoing that seriously, was a bit surprised by my sudden decision. How, she wondered, had I become so religious all of a sudden, and without her to inspire me? Nevertheless, she had a deep respect for the Lord. Because of her lax attendance, she wasn't sure she was worthy, and she wasn't sure about my worthiness either, in that my conversion seemed to have come out of thin air. "You have to be ready to accept Christ," she told me. It was a major life commitment, not to be taken lightly. "I am ready," I answered. The Bible was all white, but so were the movies. I loved them both. The whiteness I just accepted, just like a lot of other things. Acceptance was our way of life, as there didn't seem to be much point or hope of trying to change the system. The racial divide did become much more dramatic to me in the summer of nineteen thirty-eight because of a dreadful incident that shattered the normal calm of our town and forever changed the way I perceived Coatesville, even as a teenager, as a good and wholesome place to grow up. Helen Moore, a white teenager a little older than I was, had been walking in the woods near her South Hill neighborhood when she was attacked by a man. Coatesville didn't have that much excitement, so this was a big deal for us. The girl was unconscious. When she came to, she couldn't remember who attacked her. Everybody had a theory. Everybody wanted to solve this mystery. However, within a short time, the rumors started spreading that a young black man had attacked the girl and that he had raped her. Because my parents hadn't talked to me about the birds and the bees, I wasn't sure what rape was, but I had an idea, and it wasn't good. The town went crazy over the black man, a steelworker who was arrested and taken to the jail. Within hours, a huge mob of white people assembled on Main Street and began talking about lynching the suspect. They had guns, knives, and rope, and they meant business. There were hundreds of white men, maybe more. I remember my stepfather going a little crazy himself, though on the other side. "This ain't gonna happen again," he swore. I had no idea what the "again" meant. My father had a brother who had a rifle that he used to shoot groundhogs, which we fried and ate. On that hot day in nineteen thirty-eight, my stepfather and his uncle got that rifle and joined a mob of black men who went out to stop the mob of white men before they hanged the accused black man. My mother begged him not to go, warning him that he would get himself killed. I had never seen her so emotional, weeping and screaming. "Don't be a fool," she entreated him. "They'll kill you, and then they'll come kill us." Suddenly, I got scared, not just of losing my stepfather, but for my mother and myself as well. My mother thought I was in my room. When she saw me listening, she marched me back to my room and closed the door. Emotional outbursts were forbidden in this household, and certainly not for my eyes. So I holed up, and I listened to the screaming, followed by an endless silence. All I could do was shudder and pray for my family. A few hours later, my prayers were answered. My stepfather returned with good news, which I heard that night only by eavesdropping and later by gossiping with my friends. What I learned was that there had been a showdown on Main Street right near the jail. It was something out of the Wild West, like I had seen in the movies. The Gary Cooper part was played by the Coatesville Chief of Police, a tall, brave white man who faced the two mobs and declared that justice had to be served, and this was not the way. What stopped everyone short was when the chief warned that Coatesville didn't need another Zack Walker. Coatesville, he said, had been the shame of the nation. It would be even worse this time. The mere mention of the name Zack Walker was like a magic password that somehow silenced the violent white mob and vindicated the black one. The men all put down their weapons, and the crowds dispersed. The black prisoner was taken away to another city by the chief of police for his own protection. Within a week, another man was arrested who confessed to the rape of Helen Moore. He was white. The "again" my stepfather had referred to got me very curious, and who was this Zack Walker? I had never heard his name mentioned before, but after this awful incident, he was all that folks in Coatesville talked about for months to come. It was the town's dark secret, and now it was out of the bag, in a way I wish I had never known. Zack Walker was the name of the victim of a horrible tragedy that occurred in Coatesville twenty-seven summers before in nineteen eleven, but what happened seemed more out of Europe's Dark Ages or the worst barbarities of the Roman Empire when Christians were fed to the lions. He was a young black man from Virginia, who, like my family and so many other black Southerners, was lured to Coatesville by the prospects of a good job and greater freedom than at home in Dixie. Like my father, John Henry Washington, Zack Walker worked on the steel assembly line. His employer was Worth Brothers, later taken over by Lukens. Like my family, Zack Walker lived in the Spruces, then a shanty town for black workers. Nice houses like the one I grew up in were built in the roaring twenties, when the mills were at the height of their prosperity. It was a Friday in August during the Harvest Home Festival when Walker was walking home from a bar on Main Street. He was supposedly drunk, yet wasn't at all unusual for workers like my father to celebrate "When the Ghost Walked," which was steelyard slang for getting your paycheck. Walker was carrying a gun, which, too, was not that unusual for steelworkers, especially as times then were much rougher than they were when I was a girl. Again, Coatesville wasn't Dodge City, but it wasn't that far from it. Before he crossed the Brandywine Bridge that led across the river to the Spruces, Walker encountered two Polish steelworkers he knew from Worth Brothers and, as a joke, fired his gun over their heads. It was all in fun, the kind of fun you might have in a steel town in nineteen eleven. However, it may not have seemed that amusing to Edgar Rice, a security guard for Worth Brothers, which stood right near the bridge. Rice, who had been a city policeman before he became a private one, may have forgotten that he was now in the private sector. Burly, powerful, and white, Rice pursued Walker across the bridge into the Spruces and tried to arrest Walker for carrying a concealed weapon. Drunk, afraid, and unaware of his guilt, Walker tried to get away from Rice, but the security guard wouldn't relent. A struggle ensued. Rice drew his revolver and fired. Walker drew his own and fired back. In the end, Rice lay dead, and Walker fled to his cabin in the Spruces. Officer Rice had been a minor local politician who had once run for constable and nearly won, despite being a Democrat in a solid Republican territory. He was extremely well-liked, and his death came as a terrible shock to Coatesville. When the Polish workers reported to the police that the tragedy had been ignited by Walker's firing his gun, all of Coatesville was quickly up in arms. Numerous search parties were assembled to locate and arrest the man quickly renamed "The Black Fiend." One of these posses from the fire department soon found Walker hiding in a tree. So terrified was the Virginian that he took his gun and shot himself in the face, hoping to end it all. But he failed. Instead, the badly bleeding man was taken to Coatesville Hospital, the place where I always dreamed of working as a nurse when I grew up. At the hospital, Walker underwent emergency surgery. He was bandaged up like a mummy. When he awoke, he immediately admitted to police officers that, yes, he had shot Rice, but only in self-defense. Rice, acting far beyond his authority, had viciously attacked him, Walker claimed. He was simply trying to save his own life. No one in Coatesville, at least no one white, would buy Walker's alibi. The day after the shooting, August twelve, in what amounted to an extension of the Harvest Home Festival, a huge lynch mob of over a thousand white men stormed the grand-pillared portico of Coatesville Hospital. They smashed down the doors, then pushing aside nurses and orderlies. Too terrified to resist them, they found their way to Walker's room. To prevent any possible escape, the police had put him in a straitjacket and chained his leg to the footboard. The police at the hospital did nothing to quell the mob. None of them, though, had the key to Walker's chain. So the mob ripped off the footboard and dragged Walker, blood gushing from his recent head surgery, down the halls and down the steep front steps of the hospital. Outside, a crowd estimated to be four thousand, a great part of the town, cheered Walker's appearance and began chanting, "Burn him, burn him, burn him." The mob then pulled Walker, his white bandages and straitjacket red with blood, nearly a mile through unpaved roads to the Newlin Farm, the site of where I now lived. There, they tied him to a wooden fence, created a bonfire of straw and hay, and set the man on fire. When the flame first caught, Walker begged his tormentors for mercy. He reiterated his claim of self-defense. Miraculously, he was able at one point to escape the inferno, even with the footboard still shackled to his leg. He must have seemed like a zombie and terrified the crowd, but they could not be swayed from their purpose. Someone beat him over the head with a stray fence post, and they tossed him back into the flames. Still, he would not die. Apparently, he escaped a total of three times until a group of men tied a rope around his neck and brought him back to the fire like a lassoed steer to be branded. He once more begged them to spare his life, even though he wasn't white. In his final moments on earth, Zack Walker considered that mercy was reserved for whites, and none came for him. His pleas unanswered, the flames shot to the heavens, and Zack Walker finally died. It was said that among the four thousand cheering Coatesvillians were a number of blacks as well. These weren't the Southern refugees, but the old Negroes, some who had been in the area since the Revolutionary War, and all who had been living there since before the Civil War. Their tenure gave them a kind of social status, a snobby thing. They looked down on the Southern blacks, the "new Negroes," as low-rent interlopers in their Yankee haven. It was one thing- It was one thing to resent their new neighbors, but it was still another to burn them at the stake. Something about the scene reminded me of the crucifixion of Christ with the crowd cheering as the match was lit and the pyre ignited. This poor man was hardly Jesus, but he deserved better than this. He certainly deserved a fair trial or even an unfair one. Even witches got trials. Soon after the near lynching following the rape of Helen Moore, one white boy at school proudly brought out a bone fragment that his father claimed came from the charred remains of Zachariah Walker. He showed it around as a great souvenir. I was disgusted. Apparently, the town vultures chopped up Walker's bones, his manacles, the footboard, and the rail fence to which he was bound, and sold them off at great profit. I felt even more disgusted when I learned that the ringleaders of the murder all got off. Despite the fortune the state spent on the trials of these fifteen men, half of whom were teenagers, Coatesville juries acquitted every one of them. The only justice, if any, was a kind of divine retribution. A few months after the burning, Coatesville was stricken with its own plague, a major typhoid epidemic. Over thirty people died from contaminated drinking water, and hundreds more fell violently sick. The burning and the plague put Coatesville on the map as the American Sodom. Three decades later, the blot had been forgotten until the Moore Affair unearthed Coatesville's disgraceful past. That another black was nearly a martyr made me rethink everything about my happy youth, and the impact was especially strong in the context of being segregated for the first time. This period marked the beginning of my black consciousness. For the first time, it sunk in that being black was being different, and that white people, my friends and neighbors, could be capable of such vitriol and venom towards us. I never again felt completely secure, but despite this awful epiphany, at age thirteen, I still had a youth to live and little choice as to where I lived it. I was about to face an even greater revelation. One lovely crisp fall day, when the leaves were turning red and gold soon after the Moore Affair had shaken my world, a very beautiful woman came to visit us. My mother introduced her as her sister Carrie, and she was the most amazing woman I had ever seen. My mother seemed tall at five foot five, but Carrie towered above her by at least three or more inches. Because of this, Carrie called her sister Tiny. She moved and dressed like a fashion model. Not that her clothes were fancy, but the way she carried herself in them was regal. She wore a plain cotton dress with a string of dime store pearls. Yet she looked as elegant as any of the rich swells in the Fred Astaire high society films, as naturally aristocratic as Katharine Hepburn, living proof that a black woman could hold her own against any Hollywood ideals. My aunt was darker-skinned than my mother and had thick, lustrous, wavy hair and cold-black, big eyes that would light up any dark night. At thirteen, I was becoming aware of feminine beauty, and my new aunt had it in spades. I guess you might say I developed an instant crush on her. Because she carried herself like a big-city sophisticate, I immediately presumed Aunt Carrie was visiting from New York City, which I thought was the ultimate in glamour. But she actually had just moved up north from Rock Hill, South Carolina, near my parents' home of Edgefield, which was nothing more than a name to me at the time. She was living in Chester, which was only an hour away from us. She had a seven-year-old son named Willie and was divorced from his father, who remained down south. The whole day Aunt Carrie was there, I couldn't take my eyes off her, nor could she take her eyes off me, but I assumed it was because I kept staring at her. I followed her into the kitchen to help prepare an early dinner before she had to take the train home. Even though I knew nothing about the South, I did know that my family always ate southern: fried chicken, sweet potato pie, candied yams, black-eyed peas, peach cobbler, and iced tea with enough sugar to run a confectionery. Aunt Carrie was busy making some kind of chicken salad when she stopped what she was doing and just looked at me for the longest time. I thought maybe I had done something wrong. Maybe she thought I was being too nosy, following her around the way I was. But then she gave me the sweetest smile. "I'm your mother, you know," she said to me. I was stunned, speechless. "Did you know?" she pressed me. "No, ma'am," was all I could say. "Let me give you a big kiss, Essie Mae," she said to me. My eyes became riveted to the floor. My body paralyzed from moving an inch. "Don't be afraid of me," she opened her arms in a huge embrace. "No, ma'am." "Don't you 'no, ma'am' me, child. You're my daughter, my big, beautiful daughter," she said and walked over and enveloped me in her embrace. It was the strangest moment of my life so far. It also may have been the happiest. I was deeply confused. If this was my mother, what about my real mother? Her sister? I felt like I was on the quiz show to tell the truth. "Will Essie Mae's real mother please stand up?" Was this a joke? My people weren't jokesters. It was too late for April Fools, yet I surely felt like one. And yet I was so taken with this new woman, too taken for it to be anything like a normal infatuation. Blood, mother's blood, had to be at work here. Aunt Carrie? I wasn't sure what to call her now, sensed my utter and complete confusion. "This is awful to do to you," she apologized, "but I love you too much to keep my mouth shut. I just had to see you." "But why?" I stammered. "What happened?" I had always thought my parents had me back in South Carolina, then moved up to Coatesville when I was just a baby. I liked putting Aiken, South Carolina, down as my birthplace whenever I had to fill in any papers. I had no idea where Aiken was and barely where South Carolina was other than that it was a good place to get out of, at least for our people. It sounded exotic, and I liked that. But now, talk about exotic. Here was a woman, the most beautiful woman on earth, who was claiming to be my mother. Assuming it was true, how special did that make me? At this point, my mother, that is, the woman who had been my mother until a few moments ago, entered the kitchen and saw the look on my face. "Carrie, you didn't, did you?" "I did, Tiny. I just couldn't keep it to myself. I'm so sorry." "Well, the cat's out of the bag now, isn't it?" Mary said with a sigh of resignation. "Tiny, you tell her," Carrie said, as if she required her sister's testimony to validate her actions at the time of my birth, behavior of which she was now ashamed. "Your mother was quite young when you were born," said Mary, who was four years older. "How old?" I blurted out, curious beyond the bounds of discreet behavior. "She was sixteen," Mary answered, for Carrie was abashed into silence. She had to work, and she wanted to finish high school, and she just wasn't ready to raise a child. Sixteen? I marveled. I was thirteen. My mother had me when she was just three years older than I was. I couldn't imagine having a baby. I hadn't even had a date with a boy. I was even more mystified and awed by my mother's sophistication. "I couldn't care for you properly, baby," Carrie explained in a voice full of apology and remorse. "First, I put you up with friends, but I felt more secure about you with kin than I did with anyone else. Thank the Lord Tiny came through for us." The story began to unfold. Carrie put me in the care of her sister, who was moving up north with her husband to a much better life than anything I might have had back in South Carolina. "It was a giant sacrifice," Carrie said, "but it was all about my welfare. Children were often farmed out like this among black families," Mary told me. It simply wasn't talked about. "Forget the birth and follow the love," Mary explained. I had never felt anything but love, pure maternal love from Mary, so I had no reason to doubt her. And now I had double the love, which was seemingly a good thing, but having two mothers did create some big logistical issues. Whom was I going to live with? I slumped into a chair at the kitchen table. Carrie fortified me with iced tea while Mary gave me a warm hug as if to reassure me that she hadn't forsaken me. I had started to worry that Carrie would take me away to Chester, that my whole world was about to be turned upside down. After the near lynching episode, I was disillusioned with Coatesville, but it was nonetheless my known world. I wasn't ready to leave it, even to be with this wonderful new creature that had just swept into my life. As it turned out, I didn't have to worry. Carrie swept out of my life as quickly as she had swept into it. She had to get back to Chester, she explained, to take care of her family. There was no discussion of when I would go to visit them, if at all. Instead, all she said was, "See you soon, baby," with the implication that she would be coming to Coatesville, not I to Chester. Carrie kissed me goodbye on the lips. Mary had never kissed me on the lips, and there was something extremely voluptuous about the affection. I loved Carrie madly. Only when she was gone did it hit me that I now had no idea who my real father was. It obviously wasn't the departed John Henry Washington. It wasn't my stepfather, to whom I could only get so close. I was intrigued by the notion of having a real father, someone I could get close to. Was it Carrie's ex down in South Carolina? I definitely had a need, but I was too young, too scared, and too conditioned at this point to ask any more questions. All I could do was sit back and see what the future would bring. Nineteen thirty-eight had left me deeply insecure about both my community and my family. I had thought Coatesville was an all-American city, but if that was true, I wasn't at all comfortable about what America stood for. Likewise, I had thought my family was all-American as well, and that I was a pretty regular girl. Now I felt there was nothing regular about me at all, certainly not how I came into the world. At the time, I had absolutely no idea how unusual the circumstances of my birth would turn out to be.
Context of White Supremacy, so that'll be audio segment one. And we ended with the conclusion of chapter one, so we'll pick up on chapter two, Southern Exposure. Very easy. Before we get to all of that, the number, if folks have commentary to share, seven two zero, seven one six, seven three hundred, the code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. Again, you all are totally off the hook this time, metaphor, since I picked this book and picked it yesterday, no less. Not that that means I am not interested in hearing your thoughts, observations. This is a book club, always makes it better when we have engagement and hearing what people think about the material that we are covering. Certainly with this material, I cannot imagine why anyone would think that this is boring or not relevant to counter racism. But certainly, you all are off the, at minimum, Gusty will not be grumpy throughout this reading because I picked this one. And thus far, I am super, like, I was even thinking for a moment, like, wow, this could, like, if chapter one is similar to the remaining, I think, like, eight, nine chapters, because it's not a huge book, wow, this could be, like, threatening the top ten, like, amazing. We'll have to see, but hopefully if it's that good, then people will have thoughts and commentary. The number again is seven two zero, seven one six, seven three hundred, the code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. The email, untiljustice@gmail.com. Before I get to some of the emails, and I will say, we even got email commentary. I literally picked this book yesterday. Today is March seventeen, green beer, and they dirtied up the Chicago River again, painting it green. They say environmentally friendly. But I literally picked this book yesterday. And we still got people who wrote in with commentary. And I had picked a different book previously. I was even ready. I already had notes for that book ready as well. And then the disgraceful Dr. J. Russell Hawkins saying he didn't know old Strom Thurmond raping a black child, which we haven't even got to yet. Anywho, before I get to the notes, just meant it would have been so much better if this were narrated by Miss Essie Mae herself and/or a qualified black female narrator. Real tragedy that Gusty has to narrate this one. I feel like that would just, so many female voices here. It's Women's History Month, if that means anything to anyone. I don't do any holidays, but hey, there is no audiobook, and we did not, one, I didn't really have an opportunity. If we have folks who are willing to volunteer.
If we have folks who are willing to volunteer, if we have any black females who have time, and they say, “Hey, hush all that up, Gusty, we don’t need your, you know, toxic black male voice ruining Ms. Essie Mae’s memoir,” we got it. Untiljustice@gmail.com, and I will gladly hush all that up and concede. You know, you all can get to it, yield, you all can get to it. Anywho, that’s it. One of the folks who wrote in, one of our investors, said... “Greetings, Gus, glad you have chosen this text.” Me too. “I found learning about the connections between white supremacy and South Carolina usually very constructive.” We haven’t even got to South Carolina yet, how about that? Chapter one. “I grew up in Coatsville, Pennsylvania. When I hear Coatsville, PA, I think of Richard Hamilton of UConn and the NBA.” He’s a Hall of Famer. Wonder if he has any interesting stories about his time growing up in that area. Number two, Bethlehem Steel, Lucan Steel, Black in the Great Depression. Mother worked in the cotton fields of South Carolina with the Poles, Czechs, Hungarians, Slavs. This part of the chapter really resonated with me since my parents grew up in what sounds like an almost identical community during the so-called Great Depression. Their parents also fled the South in search of the warmth of other suns. Yes, quite a few overtones to be booked by Isabel Wilkerson, that I loved, top ten, not the other one that we will not name. Number three, chewing tobacco, expelling it into a spittoon. This brought back disturbing memories from childhood of my aunt from North Carolina spitting snuff into a coffee can. Folks who are in the South, I’m pretty sure that this was very common, especially like, if you could rewind back maybe thirty, forty years or more, because smoking was so much more prevalent then, and chewing tobacco and all of that, especially in the South, because that’s such a huge crop, tobacco even today, such a huge crop, so yeah, lots of them, and that is so unattractive, like, all of it. The smoking, chewing tobacco, ugh, are you serious? Are you serious? Grousest thing ever. Number four. “We blacks had to sit in the colored balcony, weren’t allowed to sit at the soda fountains. It’s not emphasized enough that these indignities also occurred north of the Mason-Dixon line. My parents never talked about it.” That is very common, parents not talking about it. The movie theater aspect is, like, all over where that sort of thing happened. Minister Louis Farrakhan even has a segment where he talked about that, growing up in New England, where he could go to the movies, and then he went to Washington DC, which I guess is below the Mason-Dixon line, but geez, that’s the nation’s capital, and he went there, and then, get out of here, light-skinned coon, get out of here, and he was all stunned, like, what is going on? Like, what is... Anywho, but super widespread, and we’ve read about this so many times with so many different black people, especially in their memoirs. I think this even goes back to Melba Patilla Beals in The Warmth of Other Suns, it is in so many books. Black people talking about either not being allowed to go to the movies at all, where they gotta sit up in the colored section, you know, hush up, you know, pay the same price, and it creaks and they don’t clean it, it’s trashy, and all the rest of it, we talked about this billions of times. Number five. “My father had a brother who had a rifle. Another man was arrested for the rape of Helen Moore. He was white, Zack Walker, and his name is Zachariah Walker, even though in the book they mostly just say Zack. Zachariah Walker, nineteen eleven. Among the four thousand cheering were a number of blacks. A white boy at school brought out a bone fragment, half of whom were teenagers. This section reads, ‘All Too Familiar to Frequent Listeners of the Cows.’” The black victims who cheered on the lynching are eerily reminiscent of the rhetoric engaged by victims who distinguish themselves as foundational black Americans, or ADAS, American Descendants of Slavery. Ooh, ee, oh, I’m sure they would give you the biggest ear boxing you can imagine. Like, what did he say? What, is he comparing us to cheer? Ooh, ooh. Metaphor, I do talk about that, metaphors, but we, some of even the Cows listeners identify as ADAS, like, we, if they could locate you, you would get such a beat down. At least be called a few names. Let’s see, I will, I’ll get in one more email, let’s see. Mkeydokos. I’ll save that, I’ll save that one for the other side. Let’s see, folks who have commentary to share, unless you’re spectating, star six one, if you have thoughts on what we heard from chapter one. Oh, man, now look at that. Now, see there? I guess, I reckon, I’m giving you all a connoisseur, a little bit incredulous, because like, I picked this book yesterday, so you all didn’t have a chance to warm up. There were literally people who said that they had the man in the High Castle had been waiting for years, literally, for us to read this book, and they had nothing to say. Gusty can pick a book at random, and now people have comments to make. Alrighty, that’ll be the last time that I gripe about Philip K. Dick, I promise. And I didn’t even dislike the book, I said I thought it was actually great. Has lots of commentary about white supremacy, just spectating for a book they picked. But that’s the last time, we’ll never, well, I won’t say that, but you won’t hear about it anymore today, and you won’t even hear about it anymore for this book club. Moving on to the callers, much obliged. Every, or not everyone, at least the first few folks who dialed in with a hand up, proceed.
How you doing, Gus? I’m guilty as charged, Nick from New Jersey with that, with my call of participation, but I was catching up on the archives, so, yeah, guilty as charged, not participating. Um, wow, so, with, with, we’re kind of like, made me reminisce. I do have a southern grandmother, and I remember coming from New Jersey to North Carolina, Greenville, exact, and her spitting snuff in the can. Uh, my great-grandmother also is, um, birthed from a tragic arrangement. Uh, white father, black mother, North Carolina. So, I really don’t know the particulars of that union, but from what I do hear, it was tacky. Um, Edgfield, uh, South Carolina, I heard that name. Um, nickname also Bloody Edgfield, from the earliest days of its settlement. Uh, the reason why I know about that name is because I’ve read the William Baskett book, All God’s Children, where they, basically, from, from the reading, it said, “Story of how the tradition of white southern violence and racism has long affected and still haunts one black family. Butterfield follows the Baskett family of Edgfield County, South Carolina.” So, uh, that, that, that name just always stuck with me. Um, it’s kind of ironic, you know, now that I thought you brought up Warmth of Another Sun, I’m sorry, I maybe jacked that name up. Warmth of Another Sun, um, you brought that up, and I just thought about the black onlookers in South Carolina who were in the crowd, and I thought about that book, when the gentleman was ran out of Florida. Instead of being angry with the white mob who was trying to kill him, he was more upset with the black cowards who didn’t help on his way up north. So again, no matter how uppity those black victims were, they are still victims, and I just know that, especially in today, especially you brought up ADAS, um, another, in another acronym, most likely will probably key in on those black onlookers instead of the white mob. Um, it struck me when the story, when it was talking about the rapist, who were, who were scared, and then later, uh, they found out that it was a white rapist. Uh, man, so I am definitely excited about hearing, um, you know, more of this. And I’m not, I’m not suggesting it, but being though that we are focusing on South Carolina, maybe All God’s Children would be something that we would want to look into, because it goes into the history and the violence of South Carolina from Pitchfork Ben Tillman on to admitted rapists. Uh, Thurmond Thomas is his name, Strom Thurmond, I’m sorry, Strom Thurmond. I’ll write that here.
The Warmth of Other Suns, the title, much obliged, victim in New Jersey. We were supposed to read All God’s Children, like, years ago, I guess, way back, with literally the man in the High Ca, the man in the High Castle, because we read Ben Tillman and the Reconstruction of White Supremacy, that same year, two thousand fifteen, that the Amazon series came out for the latter, the former. And we were gonna follow with that, because that’s all the same area. But might knock that out at some point this year as well. I don’t believe there’s an audiobook for that one, so I don’t know how excited Gusty will be to narrate again, if we have any folks who feel like volunteering, that would be one to read, All God’s Children. But yeah, we were supposed to do that years ago on the Cows Book Club. We should knock that out at some point, because I also thought that was a really, really important book. Reading more important than watching television. Uh, let’s see, other folks who dialed in with a hand up?
Can I be heard?
I heard being Santa Rosa first, we’ll get you, and then we’ll get Retired Firefighter next.
Good evening, everybody. Um, a couple of things that stood out to me was, um, uh, the white Bible, the white movies, uh, and the white fantasies. I can see all that happening, you know, the religion of white supremacy. Uh, another thing that stuck out to me was the black male rapist, no trial, and the guns, knives, and ropes reminds me of Alice Sebold’s poem. And also the white mob who went out looking. Um, what else stuck out to me was that she said that Coatsville was white and powerful. And the last thing that stood out to me, she called her mom a creature instead of a woman or a human being.
Alice Sebold, oh no, well, we did raping black males, I mean, huh. But that is, that poem, I said, I wrote that in my review. Everything that she talked about has been done, like, ritually. Every, it’s like she went and read what happened to Zachariah Walker, and then just went and wrote her poem. Raping black men, and the posses of white men, liquored up, and then, let’s go, they got a crowbar in Lucky. Here, they just went, you know, rudimentary. Much obliged for your patience, retired firefighter in Florida.
Greetings, greetings, everyone. First, I just wanted to confirm for my, my own understanding. Okay, this, this book is about the, uh, the, uh, female child of Strom Thurmond, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and it’s, and it’s in like an autobiography form, I’m assuming?
Correct.
Okay, alright, yeah, uh, I noticed on, when she was describing, um, the, um, I will just call it right now, the, the social, uh, venues uh, in and around the area where she grew up at, that she started noticing. I, I’ve just noticed on how scientific white people are in their practice of racism, white supremacy. Starting with the child age in school. In other words, I think I recall her saying that, uh, uh, as in, I believe on the elementary level, uh, they all were in school together, white people with non-white people. Uh, who were rich, craft fighters, black at that time. I don’t think during that time, there was a whole lot of other non-white people from different places, as it is today. Uh, but by the time they got in and around middle school to high school, it was different. And I think that has something to do with the, uh, the means of, of, uh, people at that age able to produce children, that white people be concerned about. To not to have, uh, a non-white black male in the same setting or close proximity to a white female, quote unquote. And I think that’s a scientific analysis on why they start the split in that, uh, in that means, in direction, you know, during that time. I think Malcolm X had a similar childhood. Uh, the food that they were eating, not so much about fried chicken, uh, that, that, that still is a, a common culture. Uh, but some, some of the things that she was describing, some of, uh, things that she was describing, uh, were, uh, I think in, like, in the rodent family. Uh, and I can recall, I can recall, uh, growing up, because all of, all of the, uh, adult people that was in the media in my family are from Georgia. And there was, you, used to be a lot of talk on those things that they ate during that time. Uh, and, uh, so by this lady explaining that, it’s not foreign to me. Although, and I’m glad it’s so, that my mother never fed us some of those, some of those things, uh, like those, uh, those animals that are, that I think that’s in the rodent family that, uh, they ate during that time, but, uh, anyway. Uh, it ought to be a pretty good book, I think it ought to be a pretty good book. Uh, I, I, uh, like books on subjects that really did happen. Uh, that helps me a lot as far as comparing, comparing the background and what I can get out of the, uh, what the person is talking about, especially if it’s autobiography. And, uh, you know, so it’s, it’s, it should be a pretty good book. That’s it, thank you.
Much obliged, retired firefighter in Florida. Minister Malcolm did indeed have a similar experience going to, like, elementary school with white children, and even though they did tell a lawyer, I don’t know, it should be a carpenter, that seems more like your nigra talents and all the rest of it. But he at least was in the same classroom with them for a while, and then, hmm, could be a raping nigra, get on out of here, and that was that. Uh, so many similarities to Minister Malcolm. Forgot about that, been a while, but we did read that in the book club as well. Uh, other folks who dialed in with a hand up if we missed you totally, proceed.
Can I be heard?
Uh, Bay Area Mom, yes ma’am.
Hi, thanks for taking my call. Greetings to everyone participating in the program. So, I liked the book. Uh, it, I got, so you know, I’m a little ditzy, so I got lost. Um, because I thought you were gonna read another book, and then, as I listened to the book, it didn’t sound like whatever book I thought. But this is a good book. But this is a good book, but then I was, duh, because you, we just did the program with the other guy on Tuesday and you, you, you did bring this up, so it took a... Took a while for me to connect the dots, sorry. But, um, I thought it was interesting, um, because she did mention that in the beginning that, uh, the lady that she thought she was her mom, that, you know, as telling the story. And, um, I remember looking her up when, um, you mentioned her, um, Tuesday as well, but I didn't. Oh, no, maybe she came up. Oh, she came up in the, um, the, uh, Dr. Francis Quest Institute. That's why she was up, but anyway, this is perfect. So, um, how, um, the, the lady that she thought she was her mom, I guess it was her aunt, and, um, I was thinking back to the dad, the original dad, uh, who's not even her dad, oh, that is so scary. So, um, and he was drinking, I, I was thinking about how a lot of, um, they still drink now, but back in those days, a lot of the males, um, black males had, had a, um, issue with alcohol. And, um, yeah, that, that, that's too bad, um. And I wonder if he was drinking too because he had, he knew a little of the story behind the baby that was there and then you have your own as well. Oh, wait, no, that was another baby by somebody, uh, oh, dear. So, yeah, it's a, it's, it's pretty good and then how the mom, the sister just came in and she, "Oh, your mom", but that, that, it's, it's weird because it confuses the, I mean, I guess it's good, but in real life, it's weird because it confuses the child that you have. It's just confusing and then it's like, well, it's like everything you thought you knew was a lie. That, that's, uh, it, it does that. And then with the, uh, the, the segregat- segregation and how, um, I think, uh, at one point, it was for a year, they had to go to, she had to go to this, uh, all-black school. And it kinda conditioned her for how she's supposed to be feeling about herself, which is a little in the back. So, um, I think it wasn't just her that felt like that after, you know, that. And then, um, just how they are the pool for, for the, uh, the, the white kids. And then if they wanted to swim, they had to jump in the, what they, was it the creek? They had to jump in the creek, yuck. So, just the treatment of, of us. And, um, then when I look her up, it looks like, yeah, she, oh, that's awful. She's just a product of assault, uh, terrible. So, um, I'll, I'll mute my line, but I really, I really followed this book. I even ignored a call because I was listening to the book. I'm so proud of myself. Okay, so I'll mute my line and thank you for taking my call.
Hey, a, a good book can hold your attention. I, um, yeah, that's, that is great. Call me back, I'm reading. Reading is more important than watching television and playing around on the phone. Depending on who it is, if you're, you know, talking craziness. Um, Mudding, yeah, folks should know, and just for details, uh, the word, the words confusion or the derivatives confused, confusion and ashamed are in this book about an equal number of times, both about eight to ten times apiece. Confusion, ashamed. Another one where you could throw in, when you play around with sex, the joke is on the offspring. Now, I mean, imagine how funny that, well, I guess we can read and keep that in mind. Now, how funny is that? You get to sixteen and find out, oh, wait a minute, wait. The deadbeat black fella who was here that was drinking and ran off, uh, that you thought was a no-count black, that, that's not your dad. And even this black woman who's been here taking care of you, that's not your mom. Isn't that funny? And most to blame for all of this still got his statue up. And again, the only reason why confusion, Bay Area Mom was confused, the disgraceful conduct of Dr. J. Russell Hawkins not including, all you gotta do is give me one paragraph. Oh, yeah, Strom Thurpin, Strom Thurman raping a black female. Even if he didn't know that she was fifteen, it would still, still be raping a black female while he's out here talking about mongrillization. Got her confused growing up thinking, pfft, get outta here, come on. Let's see, star six one, if folks got, uh, comments to share. I'll get to some of my own notes. Uh, in fact, just based on what Bay Area Mom just shared, it reminded me of one of our previous guests, uh, Janetta Rose Barris. Whatever Happened to Daddy's Little Girl: The Impact of Fatherlessness on Black Women. Really import- thirteen years, what have we done? I'll have to post this one, people can listen, or go back and listen to this. Maybe I'll go back and listen to it as well and see if maybe there's something to sound clip cuz I mean, wow, Essie Mae Washington Williams would qualify and how. But check that and maybe even read the book Whatever Happened to Daddy's Little Girl: The Impact of Fatherlessness on Black Women. Now, get to some of my notes. I think it is important that she does include Strom Thurman, uh, in the dedication to this book. In fact, he's listened, listed second, uh, in this book even above, uh, Mary Washington Bowman, who was the person that she thought was her mom for all these years. Uh, let's see, when she talked about the steel industry, the steel mills and that area being a point of pride, not pollution, uh, just because we're almost on Earth Day, I am sure that those, uh, steel mills, the pollution was gonna be closest to where the nigras were allowed to be so that they get the brunt of all the toxic impact of all of their, you know, environmental destruction and, uh, toxification of the air and water and everything else in the area, soil probably. Uh, let's see. She said American women today, I thought she was maybe talking about white women cuz she said have all the, uh, those sort of huge, have-it-all ambitions. But growing up black during the Great Depression, I was very perfectly happy to dream about becoming a nurse. That was a pretty big deal at the time, even today. Uh, and she says, and I was more ambitious than most. Uh, Mr. Fuller talks about how the system of white supremacy lowers the ambitions of non-white people. So, you don't think universal man, universal woman, much smaller goals. Uh, now, we just read The Man in the High Castle. She said that, uh, she had her own room, which seemed like a castle to her. Uh, she talked about them having to go out and, uh, get water and do these bathtub washing up in the room and all the rad and using an outhouse and it sounded primitive. Uh, she talked about her white girlfriend having indoor plumbing and an indoor toilet and that being, you know, the highest form of technology. That too is deliberate white supremacy racism where generally they would deliberately warehouse black people in areas that were gonna be the last to put on the sewer system so that you could have indoor plumbing, indoor running water and all the other amenities. Kinda the same thing that they do with like wifi and all the rest of it. And they talk about all the digital divide and all that. It is not an accident. That is just how the system of white supremacy works deliberately, likes of Strom Thurman and such. Um, when she talks about the food that they had, I thought even this, um, is probably way different because she said fried chicken, which I am not a fan of. I don't know, when he said rodent food, now, she said lots of fresh vegetables and sweet potato pies made from local peaches, strawberries, apples and plums. That is not rodent food, like that, I can get down right there, like, hey. And I was even thinking like, that is probably way better cuz she was probably getting fresh stuff, uh, from local farmers and what have you to get all these peaches and strawberries and apples and plums and all these fresh local vegetables like, phew, okra and all the rest of it. I'm sure they were eating really well. That is not quite the rodent food part, at least I don't think so. Uh, not yet, then we unfortunately got all the, you know, chewing tobacco, yeah. Um, when she talked about the blessing of all of this food, she said that her dad or the person that she thought was her dad, uh, would say odd things like Shirley Temple or Charlie Chan, to me, just the influence of television, like we're having a sacred moment and nourishing our bodies and just being all together and fellowship and food and Shirley Temple. And how many times does Shirley Temple, she's been mentioned a lot. And just, uh, white movie stars, we talked about tons of them, uh, in Woody Allen. But I think even Shirley Temple came up in Maya Angelou. We're gonna talk about memoirs, uh, we read that one, two thousand fourteen. Uh, I think, I'm pretty sure that she talks about Shirley, so many people have talked about her, uh, over the years and she's been dead for, I don't even know how long. I'm sure she was, uh, deceased by the time this book was published. I'll have to go back and, and see. Anywho, certainly Charlie Chan was. Uh, as for her or the person that she thought was her father being a hard drinker, even thinking about what Bay Area Mom said, like, I'm here taking care of these children that are not mine. And I guess doing a good job cuz she said she's remember them griping about him going, gotta take care of this white man's child and all that. And as Bay Area Mom said, he may have known some of this, like, oh, this is old, you know, racist, and if he did, like, this is old racist Strom Thurman's child, like, Jesus Christ, I'm seeing he's running for president and I'm taking care of his cha- is he sending us a check? I'm going to the raggedy steel mill and not being paid well and called a nigger and all the rest of it, living in Coatesville where they lynched, uh, Zachariah Walker. Is Strom Thurman sending us a check? Is he making his alimony payments or is he being a deadbeat white dad? Child rapist. That might drive me to drink a little bit too. And I wasn't even thinking about that, you know, just, oh, no count drinking, black male doing that. That would be enough to cause me some mental anguish. Even thinking that, like, man, that's messed up, he walked off and left his child. That's not my child. That is a white man's child that I've been here taking care of. Black male privilege, we're gonna put that there too, blackmail privilege. Make sure I get Mr. Washington's full name in as we proceed. John Henry Washington. John Henryism is right there too, you just work and work and work yourself to death, take care of a child that's not even mine and a white man's child, no less. Poor teaspoon out for John Henry Washington. His name should have been above Strom Thurman's in the dedication, in my opinion, but, you know, VGQ is not my book. Um, "Never asked about my father's departure, much as I would have loved to do so, nor did she sit me down for a heart-to-heart to when he left." Now, how could she? It's not even your dad, err. Uh, he was gone and that was that. "I miss the confident, comforting, masculine presence of my father. He made me feel safe in an increasingly turbulent world. I felt lost without him, but learned to keep that kind of emotion deeply to myself and eventually the pain died down." I added, or does it? Question mark, and that, again, I came back, Janetta Rose Barris. Whatever Happened to Daddy's Little Girl: The Impact of Fatherlessness on Black Women in the Cows Archives. Uh, when she talks about all of these, uh, poles and checks and Oskey last names, these are Eastern Europeans, as she says, who are much lower down on the racial hierarchy and at the time may not even have been considered as white. Some of that even operate in operation right now with what we're, you know, looking at and talking about. Even the, uh, Zarnaya brothers, uh, Dokar Zarnaya, they just reinstated the death penalty against him. We talked about him on the program as well, way back in the archives. Uh, let's see, and then these folks being lower down on the racial hierarchy, that's how she knew them. You go stay with the nigras cuz we don't even know if you're white let, so, you know, get over there, niggerville. Uh, let's see. Great Point, retired firefighter, always, already talked about why they had the school segregation that started at this particular point in middle school, could have been puberty, raping black males. Uh, let's see. Oh, I thought this was so important cuz she said, uh, "I think all of us were glad to be getting an education" when they find, she said, I don't make, forget the whole thing. So, she said, "Uh, this was the first times that my black friends and I had ever been defined by our race. When schools started, we found ourselves staring at each other, trying to make sense of it, confusion. But none of us said anything about it, even as a joke. Apparently, all of us had been raised in the same school of mouth-shut acceptance of the way of things. I think all of us were glad to be getting an education and an excellent education at that. If anything, the all-black faculty paid more attention to us than the white teachers had. I never had more caring teachers, but there was no sense of black unity, not even at two thousand twenty-two. Uh, no stirrings of what later became known as Black Power, whatever that means. We were just a bunch of local school kids herded." I thought that was such an important word, that's what you do to cattle, sheep, "into a school where everyone happened to be black. We didn't have time to reflect on the deeper implications. The term was over in a flash, but it did make its mark." Extremely important, I thought. And in fact, she says she comes back a couple, uh, lines later and she says, "But that one year in junior high branded me." That's my verb right there, brad, that's again, that's what you do to cattle, slaves. Men not and women not. "In my own mind, as a second-class citizen..." Minister Malcolm said, "You don't have such a thing, you have free people and slaves." Make it plain. Uh, and when she talks about the creek, now, that's another one. If you've been with the Cows, uh, book club, uh, or the program, like, man, we have heard this so many that that is Dr. Maya Angelou, that is Richard Williams, I'm pretty sure that's The Warmth of Other Suns, over and over and, and then they'll come around and ridicule you, "Oh, you coons are just afraid of water and don't know how to swim and you, that's why you all never get any gold medals at the Olympics for swimming because racism, white supremacy has been entrenched worldwide and you have deliberately kept black people out of the water." We've had guests on the program, they bombed pools to keep black people from using them to have it pop up again. And even with these creeks specifically, Richard Williams talked about, you had lots of black people who died because of this, black people who died because they don't know how to swim. And then black people who die when you go to these creeks. One thing that a creek does not have over a pool, lifeguard. I don't care how cool the creek is and how nice it is, how sunny it is. Lifeguard, they, I have never seen a creek with a lifeguard station or lifeguard on duty, never. Mr. Williams, Serena and Venus's father, he talked about how tons of black children died swimming in the creek and ditches and little no-count places like this because racists wouldn't allow them to use the pool. And that's generations, again, why you have black people even now at this late date who can't swim. Probably some of the folks on the line with us right now, not Gus T. Uh, let's see. Already talked about the movie theater, ooh, I didn't get it in detail. So, okay, they're in the nigger section of the theater. "I try not to let it detract me from watching my favorites, Fred Astaire, Ginger Rob- Rogers, who's been mentioned on the cows before, and heart thrives, Clark Gable, Errol Flynn and Gary Cooper." Now, I don't think she's talking about that old toxic black male. I think all these folks are white guys. She said, "Sitting up there in the auditorium made me feel strange about having girlish crushes on these white movie idols. If I couldn't even sit in a normal seat, how could Clark Gable respect me or, in my dreams, love me?" Apply that to Strom Thurman too. "So, my girlfriends and I had our own little protest by sneaking down into the white seats." But that, that right there is huge, all of that, because all of us identify. You just fast forward and switch the names out. So whoever the big Jennifer Lawrence, whoever the big stars are for this era, you swap those names out, all of us grew up conditioned to, oh, have a girlish boyhood. We had, uh, Dr. Sen Q talked about how he had a crush on, uh, Shirley Temple. And the, he talked, this is in the archives, he talked about, in fact, he is probably sixty years younger than Shirley Temple. So, he's growing up having a crush on her, he's seeing her when he thinks they're about the same age, right? And so, his mom says- And so his mom says, you know, she's like sixty years older than you. She would be older than your grandmother is right now. And he's like, what? Do what? No, we're gonna get married. Like all of us, that television is a weapon of white supremacy. And she's even picking out like, man, I'm sitting here crushing on Gary Cooper. And this is gonna contend, like, how are you watching as a black female in the 1930s? How are you watching Gone with the Wind? And you're crushing on the white or pretending to be yourself, one of the white characters, bossing around Hattie McDaniel. Confusion, I'm getting ahead. Let's see. Every time I hear someone talk about Amazing Grace, I think of the late Dick Gregory who hated the cows as well, but that's, you know, join the club. Says the Bible was all white, but so were the movies. I love them both. Hmm. The whiteness I just accepted, just like a lot of other things, acceptance was our way of life, as there didn't seem to be much point or hope of trying to change the system. That is exactly the way the system of white supremacy conditions us to think. And you will hear multiple, in fact, that's in the book we just, uh, well, we didn't just, I just read, we just had, uh, Dr. J Russell Hawkins on the program. That's in his book where that was said. That's gonna come up in this book repeatedly, people saying that to black people, white people and non-white people, and especially saying this to younger non-white people about all kinds of things. Nothing can be done about this. No point even trying, no point even hoping that this will, I mean, whoo. Totally demoralize you about everything and like, go ahead and get, go ahead and just get some crack and puff on that until you expire. That's basically what you're saying. Nothing about this is ever going to change. Can't win, don't try. Let's see. Oh, I appreciate this for so many reasons. She says, so she, they're gonna go, we got a threat of a raping black male. So you already know, let's get, I'm so mad, I can't even see. Isn't that what she said in Lucky Alice Eve? She says, on that hot day in 1938, my stepfather and his uncle got that rifle and joined a mob of black men who went out to rape white women. Oh, wait a minute, a mob who went out to stop the mob of white men. Before they hanged the accused black man, my mother begged him not to go, warning him that he would get himself killed. I had never seen her so emotional weeping and screaming, don't be a fool. She entreated him. They'll kill you and then they'll come kill us. Suddenly I got scared, not just of losing my stepfather, but for my mother and myself as well. Now, I appreciate this for so many reasons. One is so many times that I hear, black people are cowards. I hear this from other black people, black people are cowards and we don't fight back and we just allow this. Cows listeners dial in and say this, like, this is a profound, you know, bit of information that they're sharing, that us niggers are cowards and that we never fight back and this is our whole legacy is just bowing and singing and scraping. That is a total lie and again, shows how effective racists have been at erasing this type of history or at least keeping it from non-white people so that we don't know this sort of information because this has happened over and over again, where black people from a very weak position did what they could to defend themselves. So appreciate it. And imagine even that choice, pick up my rifle, we're gonna go stop them from lynching this black male. We're not gonna have another Zachariah Walker, but they could kill me and then come, uh, kill my family, which is absolutely true. That's happened to, but imagine the choice that you make to go and join that group. I'd argue it's black self-respect either way, but that was no way. They'll kill us and then come kill my children. I can't take that risk. That's black self-respect. And I'm, no, I'm going to join the mob. Uh, we don't even know if Zachariah Walker, knowing racist, he probably didn't and he didn't, he didn't rip this white woman. So no, we're gonna go, I'm gonna get my rifle, I'm gonna do the best I can, you know, if I die on this one, I'm willing to die on this one, but we're not gonna sit around and watch another black male be mutilated while I'm here. Black self-respect that way too. Bad choices all the way around. Um, I thought it was curious, she said, what happened to Zachariah Walker seemed more out of Europe's Dark Ages or the worst barbarities of the Roman Empire when Christians were fed to the lions. This is par for the course, especially during this time period. This is forty-four years before Emmett Till. We don't have to look for conduct across, you know, the river or way back some four hundred, three hundred years ago, white people were doing this sort of thing on a routine basis and had been carrying out this sort of savagery for decades and would continue. This is the heyday of lynching postcards. So I just thought that was a really curious comparison, much closer to home, I thought. Sobriety would be best when they talked about Zachariah Walker, this whole incident firing a gun over someone's head for a joke. Ha ha. Ew. Uh, firearm safety, we talk about that all the time. Uh, let's see. Uh, I can't imagine being in a situation that is so terrifying that you attempt to take your own life by shooting yourself in the face, like, well, I even thought, like, they could be lying about that, like, how do we know? Maybe they did that, but then I thought, wow, if they, if they had done that, they probably wouldn't have taken him to the hospital. They just would have continued with the mutilation and lynching right there. I mean, I guess it could have been, we want to wait and let a bigger crowd join, but sometimes they would be so, you know, excited about, you know, we get to cash straight and do all the rest of it, that they couldn't even wait to properly promote the thing. So I would kind of be thinking if they had, you know, done this, that, yeah, maybe he would have, maybe they would have just done the lynching right there on the spot so that, you know, maybe he did, uh, Mr. Walker shoot himself in the face and trying to escape all of this and then they, oh, no, you're not gonna deprive us. They take him to the hospital and bandage him up only to then drag him out and hmm. Uh, let's see. So they said an estimated crowd of four thousand, some estimates it's fifteen hundred, some estimates it's five thousand for a town that wasn't even that big at the time. We're not talking about a city, uh, about a city of millions or even a city of hundreds of thousands. Uh, let's see. She said that, uh, Walker must have terrified the crowd when he kept running out of the fire. I don't believe that to be the case at all. Um, they, you know, gathered for all that. In fact, they went and got aboard and just clubbed him and drug him back to the fire. I don't think they were terrified at all and, yeah, like, that's, they live for those sort of antics, bring their children out to watch those sort of antics, which see documents. Um, the black, that may have been how the black people had to carry favor with the white people to come out and participate in those sort of, uh, terrorism spectacles and have disdain for the other black people. That's how we carry favor now, some of us showing disdain for other black people. Um, when she says, something about the scene reminded me of the crucifixion of Christ with the crowd cheering as, as the match was lit and the pyre ignited, the poor man was hardly Jesus, but he deserved better than this. He certainly deserved a fair trial or even an unfair one, even witches got trials. I'm not even aware of them lynching black females with the accusation of them being a witch. If anybody knows of that, I think all the folks that they went after and saying accusing them of being a witch were classified as white. Uh, so apparently, yeah, you get, at least gotta be white to get a trial and be found guilty of being a witch. If you're a black person, you know, you just get the rope and let's proceed. Um, but I thought it was interesting, uh, the use of the word fair as well as the crucifixion of Christ. Dr. Welzing talked about that repeatedly. That's in the ISIS papers, that, that, that's what this is, uh, and what that means about, uh, Christ's racial classification and how we've been lied to. Uh, and then again, this poor man was hardly Jesus. He was no angel. Can never be that a black person, especially a black male. He was no angel. He was no Jesus, of course. Uh, and half of the folks, oh, wait a minute, we'll get it all, delectable negro. Uh, she says, soon after the near lynching, following the rape of Helen Moore, who was raped by a white man, one white boy, she didn't say a man, a white boy at school proudly brought out a bone fragment that his father claimed came from the charred remains of Zachariah Walker. He showed it around as a great souvenir. I was disgusted. Apparently the town vultures chopped up Walker's bones, his manacles, the footboard and the rail fence to which he was bound and sold them off at great profit. The trials of these men, they were all found not guilty and half of them were teenagers. That is extraordinarily important. White children leading the barbarity. We've heard that before, Forsyth County, we've heard that many, that's even in James Lowen's sundown towns, where we've heard this before. You can't be ignorant about racism if you, from the time you've been in diapers and kindergarten, you've been participating in watching lynchings and then you get to take the remnants of a lynched negro for show and tell, you're not ignorant about racism. Harry Fonda even has commentary about being a child and being at a lynching. I might even have to go back, make sure I get my name to see the Harry Fonda or Paul Newman, but I think I was right the first time, I'm gonna take that one. Harry Fonda, till proven otherwise, that's in Red Summer, been a guest on the program. I had way more notes, uh, uh, saying that her mom had beauty in spades, that metaphor is in the word guide, spades, niggers, that was a racial slur for black people. It's the same thing like being in the red, right? Cause they get away, that means you're losing money, whereas being in the black, you're making money, it's the same thing in spades, like, I got lots of niggers. I got five hundred niggers, so I got lots of money. Same thing. Why we should, that's why I say all those metaphors promoting white supremacy racism. Uh, I was gonna say something about the sugar, but I guess I'll, I'll stop there because we need to get to the second audio, uh, segment, the confusion about your parents. Uh, oh, Dr. Welzing, throw away your, when she says, I put you up with friends, but I felt more secure about you with Ken than I did with anyone else. Dr. Welzing talked about that, when you do not plan for offspring and then you gotta leave them with this person and John, Dick and Tom and God knows what is happening to them. Are they being raped? Is there a Strom Thurmond around who has a fang for young nigger gals? And I'll leave it there. Uh, if you had commentary you did not get to share, write it down. We should have ample time to share once we are done. So this will be audio segment two. Dear Senator Essie Mae Washington Williams, the cows, audio segment two. Chapter two, Southern Exposure. It was six months before I saw Carrie again, and it may have been the longest six months of my life. When I'd ask Mary about her sister, she'd dismiss my questions with a curt. She's living her life. I got the impression that Mary was feeling like a second class parent. She could see how taken I was with Carrie and that may have hurt her feelings, though it certainly wasn't my intention. She may be your mother, Mary said to me one day in exasperation at my low mood, but I'm the one who does the mothering. The next time Carrie came for a Sunday visit, she brought her cute young son. While the boy was at the age where he needed his mother, I couldn't help being jealous that she seemed to pay more attention to little Willie than she did to me. I still wasn't sure whether Willie was my brother or my half brother. If Carrie's husband, James, were my real father, he would have come up north to visit me, wouldn't he? I tried to put questions about my father's identity out of my head. There were already too many men in my life and I hadn't even gone on my first date. When Carrie went home that Sunday and kissed me on the cheek rather than my lips as before, I felt rejected and frustrated. I went up to my room and put my Ella Fitzgerald record on the phonograph to drown out my tears. I cried myself to sleep. One of the biggest problems was that I had no one to talk to about my situation. Mary was too involved in the situation and her own feelings were too sensitive. My stepfather wasn't the talkative type and he didn't seem to be that involved. I would have loved to talk to John Henry Washington, who I had heretofore assumed was my father. He would have known everything, but that man was long gone. As for my friends, for a long while, I dared not say a word. I was ashamed of the whole situation. After the lynching disaster, I became very conscious of how black people were perceived. Drunken fathers who left their families, irresponsible mothers who abandoned their children, endless promiscuity, these were the negative stereotypes I picked up and stereotypes I hated to hear. Yet here in my seemingly proper, all American family, where those same stereotypes come to life. These were secrets I was too mortified to share with anyone. Finally, I did break the ice with a friend named Elizabeth Kennedy. Elizabeth was living with her grandmother. Her mother lived in Philadelphia where she was able to find a better job than what was available in Coatesville. Elizabeth never saw her and it didn't bother her a bit. I've been treated so well by my grandmother, I have nothing to be dissatisfied about, Elizabeth said. Her attitude emboldened me to talk to her and only her about my two mothers. There are a lot of broken homes around here, she tried to console me. It's normal for us, for your parent to be gone. It's not a bad thing. It's the standard thing. Remember, you're not alone. Elizabeth wasn't miserable, but I still was because I yearned to know my new mother. She had abandoned me once when I was little, but I hadn't known it at the time. Now her second abandonment stung. The only salvation for me was to immerse myself in high school. After that one year of segregated junior high, I came back to a fully integrated high school, Scott High. The student body was fully integrated, but not the all white faculty. That was yet another jarring experience after having only black teachers in the junior high. I missed those black teachers, most of whom had seemed far more interested in their students than the white teachers were. Perhaps the white teachers were more involved with their white students because they were far more likely to go to college than the blacks were. Hardly any of my black friends had hopes of going on to any higher education. One black boy, a few years older than I, got a scholarship to Penn State and was considered a local hero. I made excellent grades, mostly A's and a few Bs and was always on the honor roll. Yet no teacher or guidance counselor ever called me in to encourage me to go further with my schooling. So I encouraged myself and never lost sight of my ambition to go into nursing. The white friends I had in elementary school seemed to drift away at Scott High. That one year apart seemed to have forever separated us. We might have shared the same classes, but we never sat together in the lunchroom and I was rarely invited to a white classmates' home as I often had been as a little girl. I had my first boyfriend in high school, a tall, handsome, first boyfriend in high school, a tall, handsome football star named George Taylor, who was so proper and formal that he invariably wore a white shirt and necktie to school, which was unusual for people that age. Unfortunately, he dropped out of school in the tenth grade and joined the Army, cutting short any possibilities of romance. A little heartbroken, I thereafter tried to stick to my books. There were a number of black players like George on the Scott High sports teams. That made it all the harder to understand why there could be no black cheerleaders. My best friend, May Oats, who was black but had a strange German name that was impossible both to spell and to pronounce, simply couldn't accept the restriction. If the male teams could be mixed, which was our term for integrated, why couldn't the female cheering squad? May railed her complaint to anyone who would listen. "We're sending you girls to school to get an education, not to be cheerleaders," May's father had told her. But May was a natural-born protester ahead of her time. Her next stop was the high school administration. I'll never forget what Assistant Principal Muthard told May. "You girls can't be cheerleaders because you people don't have bouncy hair." May and I have laughed about that comment for the last sixty years. Ever the challenger of rules, May found a black girl who happened to have very straight, thick, bouncy hair, and encouraged her to apply for the cheerleading squad. Hair notwithstanding, she was also rejected. May went on to complain to our gym teacher, Miss Tumi, who could only laugh. "Don't go trying to change the world," she advised us. "Do your cheering in the stands and be glad you can go there." After all, there were plenty of places that were off-limits to us in Coatesville, such as Ash Park, the city's main public recreational ground. The police would run us out, but prodded by May, we would often sneak in after dusk just for the sheer devilment of it. It was hard to comprehend what it would be like for us growing up in a place like South Carolina. Just that year, at the premiere of Gone With the Wind in Atlanta, Hattie McDaniel, who would win an Academy Award for her role in the picture, was not allowed into the theater for the film's world premiere. We might have been relegated to the back seats at the palace, but at least we blacks in Coatesville could see Clark Gable kiss Vivien Leigh. More than a few of us wished we could be in his arms. Although people like Miss Tully probably thought that all black girls should identify with McDaniel's mammy character, most of us secretly wanted to be Scarlett O'Hare, a subversive ambition in Coatesville or anywhere else in America. I still couldn't get the deep mysteries surrounding my mother, Carrie, out of my mind. Imagine the joy I felt at the end of the school year when Mary told me that Carrie had invited me to Chester to spend a month with her that summer. Carrie was looking after Willie all by herself and wanted me to help. So off I went on the Pennsylvania Railroad to Chester for the biggest ride of my life thus far. Chester, which was just outside of Philadelphia, was a much bigger city than Coatesville. There was lots of traffic, lots of neon, lots of black people who looked like they had fancier jobs than working at steel mills. Carrie lived in a tiny row house that did have its own bathroom, though not much more. She did housework for a living. Even at those low wages, she didn't seem to lack money, nor did she seem to want a new husband. She never talked about her ex or any men, good or bad. Men looked at her on the street, white men and black, and she'd smile back and make their day. Yet, the entire summer I was there, she never went on a date. Carrie was a remarkably good mother to Willie, maybe to make up for having abandoned me. She was with him constantly, never leaving him alone. She was a magnificent cook, even better than her sister, especially when it came to desserts. Her triumph was a three-layer coconut pineapple cake. We made that cake one evening and devoured every bit of it in one sitting. How she kept her beautiful figure, I'll never know, as I was getting slightly plump off her good meals. On Sundays, Carrie, Willie, and I would go to church with two more of my aunts who had moved to Pennsylvania from Edgefield. What a huge family I came from, and they all seemed to have fled the South. Carrie was much more religious than Mary, even more than my stepfather. She belonged to a Pentecostal holiness church, where the congregation would shout and testify in the style of the old revival meetings. It scared me at first how possessed my mother would become. I was used to my stepfather's relatively reserved Methodist ceremony, singing hymns, saying prayers, hearing a thoughtful sermon of life lessons, then going for the church social of ham and chicken and cake. The Pentecostals were primitive true believers, and Carrie was devout. Although, once we left the church, she never mentioned Jesus or religion at all. Stepping inside to services seemed to put her in a trance. The same woman who would get lost in her faith could also get lost in the secular world. Carrie took Willie and me into Philadelphia several times. It was the first time I had been there or in any big city, and I was amazed. We went to see the Liberty Bell, Independence Hall, the Betsy Ross House, and other cradles of American civilization. In light of what happened to Zack Walker in Coatesville, these shrines left me a little cold. It seemed like someone else's country, a little less mine. That bit of knowledge was a dangerous thing, in that it was making me less patriotic than I should have been. And I wasn't really thinking about slavery. That subject had yet to come up in my life. It had never been discussed at home. I knew about the Civil War, but not much, but I knew about Zack Walker, and that was enough to disillusion me. Carrie pushed me to pay attention. The world was going through some crazy times with the rise of Adolf Hitler and his invasion of the Low Countries. He had just taken Paris. War was in the air. If anyone was an enemy of black people, it was Hitler with his Aryan master race theories. I remember how depressed my stepfather was when Joe Louis lost his boxing match to the German champ Max Schmelting, and how elated he'd been the next year when Louis beat the German in a rematch. He saw it as a battle of the races, black versus white, good versus evil. That victory, he said, did more for black people than anything Abraham Lincoln or Booker T. Washington ever did. Now, I know he was carried away, but that's how symbolic that fight was in the tense pre-war times. As a teenager, the idea of World War seemed like something in the movies, but Carrie tried to give me some perspective on it. She knew a lot about politics and loved Franklin Roosevelt and anything democratic. She was sure Roosevelt was going to save the world and wanted me to appreciate our democracy, which had started here in Philadelphia. "It's not ours, it's theirs," was what I wanted to say, but I didn't want to be negative on my peppy mother. Somehow, she felt very entitled as an American, more so than I did and more so than I thought any black person who knew the score would. She urged me to learn history, though she did say once that history up north was different from history down south. It took a few years for me to understand what she meant by that. History was interesting, and a trip to the zoo was great, but shopping was better. Carrie took us to John Wanamaker's, which had to be the biggest store in the world with floor after floor of treasures. I hadn't been on an escalator before, and Willie and I couldn't stop riding up and down. Carrie loved trying on clothes, and unlike our one-nice-lady store in Coatesville, the Parisian Dress Shop, where the Jewish owners would sell to blacks but wouldn't let us try on the merchandise at John Wanamaker, the salesgirls just doted on my mother. They told her how fabulous she looked in everything, which was true. Even when she didn't buy anything, they treated her with such courtesy. "They say the customer is always right, honey. That's the way it ought to be," she told me. The biggest treat of all was when Carrie bought me a red silk dress with a hat to match and black patent leather shoes. I never felt grown up before that. My mother made a woman out of me. At the same time, she made a child, her child, out of me as well. For me, the best part of our summer was sleeping in the bed with my mother. She would cradle me in her arms and kiss me like a baby, and she made me feel like one. I realized then that I had never before felt like anyone's baby, and I loved the feeling of being adored by a mother, a real mother. She told me how beautiful I was. "No one has ever told me that," I said. "That's 'cause you've never been with your mother." "I'll never be as beautiful as you," I told her in total sincerity. "You already are. Look at that skin of yours." "What's so special about that?" I asked. "Yours is a lot softer," I said, stroking her arms. "Yours is a beautiful color. You're so fair-complected." "Is that good?" I wondered. And she gave me a look that said, "What kind of crazy question is that?" It was true. My friends never complimented others on the beauty of their dark skin, only light. Those were the days before black was beautiful. I held my arm up next to hers. I was many shades lighter. I hoped doing that might get her talking about my father, whoever he was, and how I got to be the way I was. But she didn't. Despite our closeness, I was still too much Mary's child to open my mouth and ask probing questions about Carrie's past. This relationship was too new, too shaky, too ephemeral. You could get in trouble by asking questions. That was Mary's warning, and I heeded it. I didn't want to risk breaking the magic spell I was under with my new mother. I didn't want to risk ever losing her again. So, I just let her hug me and kiss me and love me, and that was all I could ever ask for. "Boys are gonna go for you in a big way," she flattered me. "I don't know about that," I squirmed. "I've got no use for boys." "You will." She never lectured me, though, about the facts of life. Her deep religiousness seemed to overwhelm her extreme attractiveness. The way men looked at her, the way they were drawn to her beauty, she could have easily been a femme fatale, a sex goddess. But she wasn't, and was actually very prudish, never talking about men or sex or anything the scandal magazines like Confidential that you would see on the newsstands would feature in their headlines. I knew after our month together that my relationship could never be the same with Mary again, and so did Carrie. But I still never called Carrie "mother" nor "Mary" when I came back home. It didn't seem fair to either, so I excised the M-word from my vocabulary. It was hard to speak without it, but harder to speak with it. Somehow, I managed. Back in Coatesville, all I could think about was escaping. It was a matter of, how are you gonna keep 'em down on the farm after they've seen Paris, or Philadelphia in my case? To facilitate my escape, I began to work as a nurse's aide during the rest of the summer at Coatesville Hospital. I felt very honored to have been chosen for this job, for there were no black nurses in the hospital, and I was the first black woman to have an aide position. Coatesville Hospital was the place where Zack Walker was dragged from his bed, footboard and all, to his fiery doom. Hence, there were some negative associations with the place. But I chose to go with the positive ones. I was bringing change to a place that needed it, and this job would be a wonderful resume item when I was ready to seek work in the world outside. Coatesville Hospital was a very snooty place. The administration was resented in our black community because of the way they'd treated our one black physician, a wonderful man named Dr. Atkinson. Dr. Atkinson was from Georgia and was so light-skinned, he could have easily passed for white. But he had no interest in social climbing, only in helping sick people, and Coatesville Hospital denied him their facilities to do so. I later would learn about the Hippocratic Oath, which Coatesville Hospital obviously suspended when it came to black patients whom it would treat only in welfare wards, never in private rooms, and only by white doctors. All the blacks in Coatesville got together to build Dr. Atkinson his own clinic by giving a series of chicken dinner fundraisers. The result was a beautiful private hospital in a mansion on Chestnut Street, the fanciest street in town. Dr. Atkinson was the only black on that street, but the best testimonial to him of all was that he had a lot of white patients. Dr. Atkinson's achievement gave me hopes for a nursing career in New York City. Dr. Atkinson's achievement gave me hopes for a nursing career in New York City. My aide job at Coatesville Hospital was the first step on what I knew would be a long road. To me, it was a giant step. I earned the princely sum of twelve dollars a week and was issued a white uniform and white lace-up shoes. My jobs were to bathe patients and serve trays of food. My most indelible memory of the hospital was its ringing bells. Every patient had a bell and every one seemed to be pressing it at the same time. I was thus always on my toes, answering one request or another. It made me feel important to be needed. Despite the absence of black doctors and nurses, there were plenty of black patients and I could tell they were happy to see me, a friendly face. My only friends at the hospital were the kitchen's black head cook and another outsider, a young Amish nurse named Hilda, who invited me to her family's home in Lancaster many times. Hilda was the kindest, most colorblind white person I had ever met. She turned around a lot of the negativity my exposure to Coatesville's secret shame over Zack Walker had engendered. Back in junior high school, I found a teacher who cared a great deal about me. Ernest Warren, who taught music, sent me to a clinic for my eyes. He noticed that there was something wrong with the way I always sat in the front row and still had a hard time seeing the blackboard. He asked me what kind of light I studied by. I told him by the streetlight outside my window. "Who do you think you are? Beethoven?" The music teacher scolded me and then kindly explained his reference to Beethoven's Moonlight Sonata. It wasn't that I didn't have a lamp, but Mary made me go to bed at nine. Because I loved my studies, I wanted to keep reading, but I didn't want to get into trouble, so I read by the streetlight. Mr. Warren sent me to an eye clinic where I was prescribed a hideous pair of round metal glasses. The moment I put them on, once I got over the shock of my appearance, I loved them. All of a sudden, I could see. I must have been nearly blind before, but I had no idea. Besides, I wasn't a complainer. When Mr. Warren asked me why I never went to the doctor, I explained Mary's philosophy about doctors. "You went to the doctor only if you were miserably sick at death's door. Otherwise, you took baking soda." He laughed. That man was my savior because he literally opened up the world for me. I'm glad I had those glasses because they enabled me to see South Carolina when I finally got my chance. After our summer together, Carrie, who was a bundle of energy, would come to see us nearly once a month, bringing Willie with her. She would always give me a treat, like taking me to the Parisian Dress Shop to buy me clothes or going with me to the Rocky Springs Recreation Park, an amusement park where they had a ride called the Jack Rabbit that always gave me a thrill. Once, she gave me an even bigger one by taking me up for a ride in an airplane that cost her one dollar for half an hour. But my biggest thrill came when she and Mary, my two mothers, took me with them down to their birthplace in Edgefield. One of their beloved sisters had died. They wanted to go home to her funeral and they decided it was time to show me where I had come from. Context of white supremacy, so that's where we will resume next week midway of chapter two in Dear Senator. The number is seven two zero seven one six seven three hundred. The code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. The email untiljustice@gmail.com. Do not wait till the last moment if you have commentary to share, especially if you didn't get to share during the first segment. If you have some other comments, questions on the basically chapter and a half of the text that we have heard thus far. All the folks who dialed in with a hand up, retired firefighter, victim in New Jersey, Bay Area mom, all are with us. Any other folks, if you have comments you would like to share, star six one, feel free. Folks with a hand up, comments?
I have, I have a question. She was mentioning, mentioning something about the, uh, the Lowlands and then, and Or is she still, still in the thir- in the late thirties?
Uh, I did not hear you for a second. I don't know if my audio dropped or what have you. Can you repeat your question?
I, I was, I was, uh, asking, uh, I heard her say something about the Lowlands and then, uh, I think Germany, uh, taking over, uh, France. Uh, is, is she still talking in the late thirties or the nineteen forties?
I, I believe she's still, uh, late nineteen thirties, like we haven't even really got to World War II, Pearl Harbor, any of that. Uh, she's still pretty much late nineteen thirties.
Okay. I, I thi- I could be wrong, but I think I detected a mistake that she was making in, in history. Because France actually didn't get taken over by Germany until nineteen forty. Uh, but, but, uh, other than that, uh, I, I, as I'm listening to her, uh, her, uh, life story and probably in the next reading, uh, she's going to be notified on who her father is. Uh, it reminds me of, uh, uh, a setup similar, a real, of, of setup that took place at the last place that I coached with the, one of the, one of the kids on the team. He's actually now in college at Mississippi State. Uh, probably in another couple of years will be playing in the NFL. But, uh, the, the arrangement that, that he had to meet his father for the first time, for some reason, the mob set it up in the locker room. And I, I thought that was kinda like inappropriate. You know, it's just, I, anytime I hear about something similar to this, although his father definitely was not a white person. Uh, but, uh, I was just thinking about, uh, that particular young person's, uh, situation, how awkward he probably felt, uh, by, uh, it's already a, a delicate situation at best in the first place, but, uh, parents really have to, you know, work when they, when they inform a child about, uh, you know, their quote-unquote real parents and whatnot. It's, it's a quite a, uh, hard thing to arrange. I don't, I don't know if there is a quote-unquote right way, uh, but, uh, I think of some things that probably would be unappropriate and the experience that I observed, uh, definitely, I don't think was an appropriate situation to come to his, uh, locker room in the, in the, uh, at the school that he, uh, attended at the time, high school, they attended at the time, but anyway, yeah. Just thinking about that, but, uh, that's it, thank you.
Much obliged. Uh, give me one second, just with, so I had to, uh, piece this together, right, with, uh, cause she does not have a year posted for chapter two, like the title for chapter one is nineteen thirty-eight, so she dates stamps that one. Once we move to chapter two, she doesn't have a date. However, she mentions, uh, what's happening in Germany and she says specifically, I'll read the exact portion, uh, from the text here. Uh, oops. Oh, okay. So she says, just pulled it up and then I changed my, uh, highlight. All right. All right, so what she writes specifically is, uh... Chapter two, okay. "Carrie pushed me to pay attention. The world was going through some crazy times with the rise of Adolf Hitler and his invasion of the low countries. He had just taken Paris. War was in the air." Now, there is no date, no year attached to this, other than in the previous chapters, nineteen thirty-eight. So, I had to skip ahead, uh, cause she's talking about the fight with, uh, Max Schmeling. I guess that's two ways you can date the fight with Max Schmeling and Joe Louis, cause she talks about that happening, uh, at the same time, uh, as all of this. So, I guess she's moved ahead to nineteen thirty-nine, uh, nineteen forty in the text, even though she doesn't give an exact year. So she has moved ahead a little bit, cause these events, uh, do take pace, as you said, a little bit later than nineteen, uh, thirty-eight. So, just, uh...
Yeah, Schmeling-Louis fight, I believe, did take place in thirty-eight. I know, I know it was, it was before World War II, definitely. And I think it was thirty-eight.
June twenty-second, nineteen thirty-eight, so she's kinda moving there and then moving forward. Gone with the Wind, uh, debuts in nineteen thirty-nine, so, and she mentions that like a few pages right after, talking about what's happening in Germany and Hattie McDaniel's mistreatment and trying to go see the film, uh, in nineteen thirty-nine. So she's moving, she's moved on in second chapter a little bit further, even though she's, it's kind of all the same period, nineteen thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty. Seems like she's kind of, uh, writing that all the same way.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you for the caller, being patient.
... when it came to the book, but I was, something I just picked up, that's all. Thank you.
Dates accurate, that is important. Uh, I think that was... Our victim in New Jersey, did you have commentary, sir?
Uh, yes, yes. Um, I'm enjoying the book. Um, I'm glad that you also, uh, I wanted to speak on that, but, um, I didn't, uh, it's kinda escaped me. Um, somehow, you know, black self-respect for so many years, you know, we've just kinda like taught, um, you know, you know, black people were just cowardly. Um, and you know, once you kinda like learn about racism, white supremacy, right, racism, white supremacy, you know, you're dealing with more or less like, I mean, you know, power. You're dealing with a military, um, occupation, you know? Where, where average white person has the full backing of the police department and to have the backing of the police department, you have the backing of the United States government and military. Um, so, thanks for pointing that out. Um, her, I, I, I would say just kinda like her, uh, knowledge or just her, um, understanding of racism, white supremacy during that time, um, I would, I would definitely say, um, she was definitely on the right track. Uh, you know, just when she was looking at statues in Philadelphia and she, you know, she just said to herself, like, you know, she, she, she kinda felt, you know, foreign, felt everything, like that wasn't her, that was theirs. And how a mother contextualize the difference between north and south and as we, you know, there are further studies about sundown towns, we know that the north and the south, um, was pretty much, um, the same. Um, uh, as he was reading, I looked up the age of, uh, uh, Strom Thurmond, so he was born in nineteen oh-two, so during his time, this man was in his thirties. So, thirty-something-year-old deadbeat dad. Um, I thought about Malcolm X, how his teacher basically, uh, practiced racism, just basically, uh, you know, isolated him to a certain, uh, um, employment opportunity when he wanted to further his education, said, "No, no, no, you know, you're a Negro, you know, work with your hands." So this woman, you know, she was just dedicated to, you know, wanting to be a nurse. Um, again, I'm, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm just seeing just a lot of, uh, self-respect, black self-respect, uh, in this woman, even her compassion as it relates to the men, you know, when she was talking about how, you know, just, just her understanding of just family and, and not wanting to basically feed into, um, certain stereotypes. Um, yeah, so I even looked up a picture as I was rea-, uh, as you was, as you was reading. Um, she, she for sure in her old, older age, looks like her, her father. Um, definitely. Um, yeah, so that's all I have right now, just, just, just real interesting. And I didn't even realize until you brought up into the reading, uh, talking about Hitler and Max, Max Schmeling and, uh, Joe Louis, like how early on, you know, this was. So, just how she's contextualizing racism, white supremacy during that time, you know? So I just really appreciate that.
Context is important. Caller in New Jersey, uh, Bay Area mom, comment she wanted to get in, or folks satisfied?
Well, I, I have a comment, but somebody else needs to go. I can tell you, ma. Okay, uh, so, I'm looking forward to the, the other part, the rest of it. I, um, I'm sure she'll, uh, at some point, talk about the, um, the, the dad, um, the, 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 he was like, yeah, twenty-two, he was, yeah, that was, uh, yeah, uh. So, anyway, I'm sure she'll talk about him too and I, I, I'm sure she was, um, cause I didn't, I didn't read a lot about her, but I'm, I'm sure she was, uh, just kinda concerned on who her father was. Um, a lot of girls, especially ones that are confused, they wanna know who, who their, who their parents are or where they came from. And, um, just wanting, longing to be with her mom too. I'm just taking it just a little, just twisting it a little because I'm looking at it a little deeper and just, um, her longing for, um, love and never really got it, but noticed that her aunt treated her, her, her biological child, you know, different than her and, um, her, her mother. And then she's lighter, light comple- I'm, I'm assuming just from listening that she's, uh, light complected as well, so that gets a different, um, affection as well when it comes to us. Um, a lot of times we treat the, uh, the lighter complected child, um, a particular way and the darker one not as, um, pleasant as the light one. So, um, I, I just wanted to throw that in and, uh, thank you for asking and I'll meet my mind.
Black Get Back. Langston Hughes has a whole poem about that, maybe we'll hear that as we proceed. Uh, before we get retired firefighters, uh, extra comment, uh, one of our investors wrote in quickly, uh, for chapter two, number one, he says, "All the blacks got together to build Dr. Atkinson a clinic. I found this very admirable." Hear, hear. Number two, "Amish Hilda was the kindest, most color-blonded white person I had ever met. It's interesting how the Amish are treated compared to black religious separatist groups such as the Nation of Islam aforementioned. For example, the Amish are exempt from military service. Uh, they accommodate them for various traffic laws due to their use of horse and buggy. They also have a national committee which can negotiate various governmental bodies regarding whether they have to follow other regulations which are for the most part required by US citizenship." Lots of folks are treated better than the Negro. I could not imagine if black people wanted to live like that, that being allowed either, like, yeah, we got some black identity extremists. Uh, retired firefighter in Florida, your other, uh, comment, sir?
Yes, I, I just would, would like for us to, uh, also, uh, observe how strategic, uh, the... uh, the white supremacists were during that time. Uh, it's co-, it's kinda common today, but in the likes of Joe Louis, who was actually invited, I believe, to the White House, uh, after he beat Schmeling, cause at first Schmeling had beat, beaten him, uh, before he was, uh, heavyweight champion of the world and then he, he, uh, basically devoted himself and ended up beating, uh, Max Schmeling in that famous fight and, uh, and how the president at the time, Roosevelt, uh, made a comment about this is kinda muscle that we needed and whatnot. And that was, that, that's, that's a, that's a, actually is a, a common tactic that, that all of us see all the time now, but it was the origins of it was going on during that time, uh, to, to basically to get black people interested in whatever white people were about to, about to do, which is to, uh, further, uh, uh, plant themselves as being, uh, the, uh, the most powerfulest, uh, force on the planet amongst people. Uh, and, and also even, even with the idea of, uh, that, that movie with Hattie McDaniel, uh, she also was highlighted. I think she was the first black person to win a, uh, a, uh, No-, not Nobel Peace Prize, uh, what's the, what's the, the big award for an actor or an actress? I forgot what it is. But anyway, she was, I think she was if not the first, one of the first. And I remember seeing that, that news clip on YouTube and she had tears in her eyes and whatnot, very grateful about, uh, her winning the prize and whatnot. And white people use that type of, that type of, uh, publicity to work in their favor more so than anything. So I, 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 I think that was significant that she did, uh, bring those movies up, those particular movies up and the, and also Joe Louis up in her, uh, in her, in her, uh, story about herself. That's it, thank you.
Much obliged.
Academy Award, that just came to my mind, sorry, sir.
Much obliged, retired firefighter in Florida. Uh, let's see, Dr. Maya Angelou had quite a bit to say about the, uh, Schmeling-Joe Louis fight as well, super, uh, influential throughout the history. Lots of those Negro white boxing matches end up being that way. We'll get to some of my notes really quick and then we will wrap it for this week, uh, be back next week. This book is not too long, so, uh, we'll have, you know, a few more weeks on it, but, uh, hopefully we'll learn quite a few things. Let's see, so she says, uh, she talks about her stepfather and all these people that she thinks are her fathers, uh, being gone and not having anyone to talk to, them being long gone, uh, fatherlessness. Uh, let's see, and raping Strom Thurmond at the root of all this, um, and she says she became very conscious of how black people were perceived, drunken fathers who left their families, irresponsible mothers who abandoned their children, endless promiscuity. Now, again, all of it, you still hear this in two thousand twenty-two, respectability, politics and all the rest of it went, the master, whatever you wanna call it, philanderer and irresponsible mom and no count, that is Strom Thurmond all over the known universe. And then we gotta be the ones to sit around and feel some type of way about all of this and how we're gonna be perceived, like the hypocrisy of it, again, why Dr. Hawkins, him not including that disgraceful act of racism deliberate. Uh, let's see, she said, uh, "There were a lot of broken homes. It's normal for us, for us, for your parents to be gone. It's not a bad thing, it's a standard thing that is by racist design to have lots of little throwaway children, uh, so you can start out really weak and vulnerable, especially if you got a whole lot of Jerry Sandusky and, uh, Woody Allen and Strom Thurmond's around who got a thang for young girls and boys. Oh, yeah, we want lots of folks who no parents at all, nobody look out for you and you're just as weak and vulnerable as can be, like, oh, racists love that. Mary Kay Letourneau too, can't leave out the white women." Uh, let's see, says, "No teacher guidance counselor," we just talked about that with, uh, Minister Malcolm, "no academic support at all, she had to have ambition from herself." Uh, she said, oh, and she talked about how her white friends, so-called, that she had in elementary school drifted away by high school. This is standard even today, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, Mr. Fuller talks about by, by about the time that the average white child is fifteen, maybe before then, they got it if they had Negro friends before then, by about fifteen, oh, yeah, you're a nigger, I don't need to be hanging out with you, get out of here. And I've heard this, that even with so-called, uh, Asians, non-black, non-white people, where they experienced the exact same thing. Tojo, get out of here. And he said, "I had my first boyfriend in high school, a tall handsome football star named George Taylor, who was so proper and former, he invariably wore a shirt and necktie to school, which was unusual for people that age. Even still now, I think that may have been a response to white supremacy racism. Maybe if I wear a shirt and tie, I won't be treated like an old raping, uh, Zachariah Walker." Probably not, but I mean, we can try. Uh, let's see. They're talking about that the teams can't be mixed, they can't be integrated. Strom Thurmond is raping black females and they're talking about the teams can't be mixed. That's what I mean about, you gotta point that out every time, that's not what we're talking about, separation. Get your penis out of that black child Strom Thurmond if this is about separation and we can't have mixed teams. Let's see. Oh, she talks about now Hattie McDaniel, now this debuts nineteen thirty-nine, Gone with the Wind. Uh, she said, "We might've been relegated to the backseats at the palace, but at least we blacks in Coatesville could see Clark Gable, white man, kiss Vivian Lee, white woman. More than a few of us wished we could be in his arms. I'm sure for black males, a number of them saw that and wished that they could be kissing Vivian, Vivian Lee. Although people like Ms. Tully probably thought all black girls should identify with McDaniel's mammy character, most of us secretly wanted to be Scarlett O'Hara or Red Butler, the white man. A subversive ambition in Coatesville or anywhere else in America." I don't think that's subversive. I mean, she could, you know, explain what she means by that, but having black people want to be white people, that is like total success of racism, white supremacy, that is annihilation of black self-respect. In fact, that's gonna go right to the next part of the book, uh, let's see how far it takes before we get, it'll be a little bit, but she says, uh, "When they mention the food, this, I think, is getting closer to rotting food." When she talks about the food that they had at the church, the Methodist church, ham, chicken and cake, what is that? What happened to all the fresh, uh, fruits and vegetables that she talked about before? The plums, that, you don't have no vegetables? Chicken and, it would just be one, chicken and ham? Jesus, try to, and then cake, all that sugar, like what kinda meal is that? Uh, when I went to Philadelphia, I went to see the Liberty Bell too, I didn't know how to feel about that. I didn't go and get all patriotic, it was just, oh, the Liberty Bell, like, all right. I saw the Rocky statue too, that didn't exist when she was gone. Um, they said Joe Louis, he didn't have a statue at that time. Uh, didn't we just read Adolf Hitler? Didn't we just read that man in the High Castle? I love that sort of thing where we get the continuity with books, like, ooh, lined up nicely. Uh, let's see. I thought it was interesting, she's talking about her mom, Carrie Butler, how she loved Franklin Roosevelt and anything Democratic, that is, I mean, this is not the Democratic part, cause this is capital D Democratic, so this is like Democratic Party. I mean, this is like light years before Barack Obama and Kamala Harris, I mean, I don't know what's the love of the, I mean, this is the party of Pitchfork Ben Tillman at the ti-, and the party of Strom Thurmond at the time, like I, uh, I don't know what to say. That's the same thing as someone saying that they were watching Gone with the Wind and loving it and identifying with Red Butler and all, like, wow, confusion has been there for a long time. Although we did get a Malcolm X moment with that possessive adjective, the, all the Pollyanna of Philadelphia and the former nation's capital, she said, "It's not ours, it's theirs." That's said just like Minister Malcolm X. Uh, let's see, I get in my last few, okay, now we get to the skins, okay. Uh, thinking that I wanna be like these white people, that's how you end up with worshiping fair skin. I mean, you really gotta think about all that for this book, the person who is at the root of all this confusion and all the problems in this book, Strom Thurmond. So if we appreciate fair skin, just like God, having something in spades, that's in the word, God, that word fair, we've read that so many times, uh, having fair skin, which total incorrect use of the word. You don't celebrate fair skin unless you are celebrating Strom Thurmond, a white racist raping a fifteen-year-old black female. If you think there's something beautiful and amazing about the skin complexion of S.E. May Washington Williams, which is what her mother, and now imagine that on the brain computer, your black mother telling you, because you are fair, you have less melanin than me, you look, your skin complexion is closer to that of your child raping white supremacist father and because your skin complexion is closer to his, you're beautiful. Boys are gonna think you're attractive. Wow, you're gonna be beautiful, more beautiful than, wow. Pam has a section in the Beauty Con gang, oh, the spirit Pamela Evans-Harris, she would have been right there with us on this one. Uh, she talked about repeatedly the impact that that has, talking to children that way. Imagine not some strangers, oh, you're so beautiful and your hair and all that, cause you got that white parent. This is your mother telling you you're beautiful because you're fair. You don't have a whole lot of melanin like me, you're beautiful. Victim of white supremacy, but I mean, and she said, hey, this was before black is beautiful, nobody was talking that, nobody says that now, but hey, nobody was talking that. Wow. Who's to blame for all that? Racist man, racist woman and racist child, cause they were doing the lynching too. Uh, she said, uh, beauty, you're so fair complected, you're so beautiful. She says, is that good? I wondered, when she said you're so fair complexion, you're so beautiful, what kind of crazy question is that? Now, that's the sort of thing that drives you insane, that's why Dr. Wells said, we don't qualify for mental health. Child's brain computer is working correctly, what? What do you mean I'm beautiful, cause I got all this pale skin, what? That doesn't make sense, oh, you're beautiful, look at that, you look just like a raping white man, what? I, what? You'll get it, you, the confusion will set, the brain trashing will continue, see, oh, yes, I do look closer to the plantation master who was raping Hattie McDaniel, yes, I got it. And see, that's even part of the disguise, like, we can't have it look like, oh, Strom Thurmond and Thomas Jefferson were out raping Hattie McDaniel, so we gotta have her look real unattractive, some, uh, overweight mammy figure. That is not the reality at all. Put a fifteen-year-old, don't even put a attractive woman, don't put Halle Berry in there, find someone's fourteen-year-old daughter and have some lecherous, salivating white man, Woody Allen. Hmm, hmm, that's what we're talking about. And again, the only reason we're reading this, Dr. Russell Hawkins, he didn't think this was relevant. Most white people somehow either don't think this is relevant or claim, I didn't know nothing about that, I was ignorant. Anything else? Let's see. Oh, I gotta get the Rick James in, now she says, "Her mom was so beautiful and everything, she could've been a sex goddess," whatever that means, if that means, you know, some sort of, uh, the incorrect sexual high promiscuity, that's rampant in the system of white supremacy. She says, "But she wasn't and was actually very prudish, never talking about men or sex or anything. The scandal magazines like Confidential that she would see in the newsstands would feature in their headlines." I'm just going back to Alice Sebold and Rick James, uh, she says, make sure I get the lyrics, she says, oh, I had it pulled up, I think it got moved off, it was right there where he mentions that exactly, let's see if I can find it really quick and move along. Uh, uh, there we go, "The girl is pretty wild now. The girls are super freak, the kind of girl you read about in new wave magazines." Confidential. Uh, let's see. When she talked about Dr. Atkinson's huge black self-respect, getting his own facility, but I thought this was important, when they talk all that nonsense about, uh, Nurse Rivers and no count ignorant black people don't wanna go to get the vaccine and all that, no, 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 you can leave all that out, that's what I said for two years, you can totally ignore all that. This is much more accurate and what should be said, not Nurse Rivers and fifty years ago, I don't know anything about Alabama, can't even spell Alabama. This is what you tell me, you don't go to the doctor, you only go if you're miserably sick at, at death's door, otherwise you take baking soda. The reason that black people had that sort of nonsense thought process and behavior is because you have a black physician, Dr. Atkinson, from Georgia, so light-skinned, he could've easily passed for white. So we just heard all this glorification, right? He's fair, right? He's not like the rest of us, no count ignorant coons, right? Probably been in his family some raping white man too, right? He can come and practice, right? You don't wanna touch the niggas anyway. Wrong. He had no interest in passing for white, climbing the social ladder, only in helping sick people and Coatesville Hospital denied him their facilities to do so. That should be white people at Coatesville Hospital, whatever. I later would learn about the Hippocratic oath with Coatesville Hospital obviously suspended when it came to black patients whom it would only treat in welfare wards, never in private rooms and only by white doctors. That's why you have generations of black people who say, I'll take my chance with baking soda and no vaccine as opposed to going to racist white doctors. The Coon Man, former governor of Virginia. That's more accurate as opposed to Nurse Rivers, gotta blame it on a black female on top of that, you didn't even allow Nurse, she talked about that in the book, didn't even allow Nurse Rivers and then blame it on her. Layers of racism. Uh, let's see. When she said, I thought this was important, this might be my last comment, we'll see, she said, "The best testimonial to Dr. Atkinson of all was that he had a lot of white patients." That kinda pained me, I thought the best testimonial was that these black people scrimped their money together for chicken dinners and all that and built him a facility in the nice part of town, the only black property owner and business there. I thought that was the highest praise, not that white people came to him. You got no count white, uh, shyster doctors, what they call it, snake oil and quackery, that a bouncer, that doesn't surprise me at all if you actually have a black person who is a quali-, you gotta be twice as good, right? John Henryism, they already told me that, so that doesn't surprise me at all that you would have some white, man, that nigger doctor actually does know what he's doing, he's not gonna give you some snake oil. Let's see, anything else I need to get in? Malcolm X again, she was reading by the streetlight, didn't that Minister Malcolm, they even did that in the movie, he's in his jail cell, same place, he's in greater confinement and they shut the lights off at nine and he so wanted to read, he's up reading late night and he had to get glasses too, like, wow. He had a raping white grandfather, unless my memory is bad, I think he talks about that quite a bit, didn't they call him Red for a reason? Lots of la-, I didn't, wasn't even thinking about all that, we got lots of connections with, uh, the autobiography of Minister Malcolm, which a great chunk of that, at least the first half, is exactly about this subject matter, raping white men, and I know my memory is very accurate on that one, we read that one two thousand fifteen, same year, we could've hit them all that year, Ben Tillman, Malcolm X, all God's children, we could've dotted them all and been done with it in two thousand fifteen. Uh, that's everything, yep, that's everything, bang, we'll be back next Thursday to continue pickup in chapter two, Dear Senator, raping white men, child raping, be accurate, be accurate, child raping white men. Be here tomorrow for Neutralizing Workplace Racism, eight P.M. Eastern, five P.M. Pacific. Much obliged for folks tuning in, we had more live participation today than we had for the entire book series for The Man in the High Castle, which was- for the entire book series for The Man in the High Castle, which was picked by like a dozen, we had a, we didn't need integration, we had an entire team of people who wanted to read that book and almost none of them participated. I did say I wasn't gonna mention that anymore, but, sorry. Oh, well, I'll let it go, we moved on, new book, I'll let it go. Uh, sobriety would be best under conditions of white supremacy, we need high-functioning brain computer, long tradition of black people struggling with sobriety to compensate through the system of white supremacy, John Henry Washington. Uh, if you're out and about, Zachariah Walker. Guns, knives, ropes, we are ready to lynch and any nigger will do. Exit. This is not a time for confrontation, uh, unless you are ready to die and or kill right now. Zachariah Walker, exit. If you're in a vehicle, you're sober, you're buckled, not on the cell phone, we need all of our attention so we can be mindful of what's happening around us and we're trying to minimize contact with race soldiers, badge or no. That said, Creator, we ask that you help us remain patient with other victims of racism, black people. We ask that you help us remain patient with ourselves, remind us to demonstrate the highest levels of black self-respect at all times, in all places, each and every time we are in contact with another black person, it has been time, replace white supremacy with justice immediately. Cow signing out. Whoop, whoop, whoop. Before we sign out, I just want to make sure I take that as well, Gus T was correct, Henry Fonda, yes, did talk about being at a lynching, this is from the book Red Summer, we had the au- the author of this book on the program, uh, in two thousand eleven, it's in the archives, talks all about lynchings like what we heard with Zachariah Walker, but from Henry Fonda, at fourteen years old, this is what he said he saw, uh, "Trapped in the burning building, some prisoners prayed, others cursed, some demanded that Brown be turned over, Sheriff Clark responded that white deputies stopped the black prisoners from throwing Brown off the roof to the waiting crowd." Black self-respect again, how about that? Trapped in the, uh, excuse me, at about eleven P.M., nine hours after the mob first formed, it achieved its objective as rioters made their way onto the smoky upper floors, somebody handed the nigger to us, one told a reporter, "We tied a rope around his neck and dragged him to the south side of the building." Investigators later believed Clark handed him over, though he denied it, before they brought him to the mob, rioters beat him senseless and tore off his clothes, here he is, rioters cheered as they dragged him outside. Fourteen-year-old Henry Fonda saw the lynching from the second floor of his father's printing shop across from the courthouse, his father felt it was important for his son to witness the savagery. Fonda recalled looking down on the mob choking, the courthouse square cursing, waving guns and clubs. Fonda saw Brown dragged from the jail by a group of armed white men, a great huzzah went up when they saw the poor fellow, he recalled, they took him, strung him up to the end of a lamppost. And while his feet were still dancing in the air, they riddled his body with bullets, it was the most horrendous sight, they cut down the body, tied it to an auto and dragged it through the streets of Omaha. Fonda's father did not say a word as they drove home, my hands were wet and there were tears in my eyes, Fonda wrote later in his autobiography, "All I could think of was that young black man dangling at the end of the lamppost, the shots and the revulsion I felt." Omaha's Black Weekly, the Monitor reported mothers with babes in their arms pushed forward to see the body, a few fainted, but more shouted with glee. That will be a conclusion. Gus T's memory is not too bad some days. Cow signing out. Thanks all for tuning in.